Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Brandywine School District Board of Education regular meeting. Today is Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We are live in the Brandywine High School auditorium, also broadcasting via Zoom. Ms. Harris, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Scrobuck.
Here.
Ms. Pigeon.
Here.
Mr. Ackerman.
Present.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Reverend Dickerson.
Here.
Ms. Stock.
Here.
Dr. Jaggeday.
Here, all present.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harris. At this time, I'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is that Ms. Stock on the first?
Yes, that was Ms. Stock.
Mr. Heller on the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's kick it off with Brandywine High School. Lola and Katie, come on down.
Hello, audience. Ooh, that was loud. Hello, audience and board members. My name is Lola Fanning, and I'm the president here at Brandywine. I apologize for my lack of business casual. I was just working with kids, so I did not have time for a costume change. That's okay. So unfortunately, our vice president could not be here with us today, so it will just be me. Next slide, please. So, starting off with academic and art celebrations, we are preparing for our next school year with our course selections beginning last week. Our guidance counselors are working with students during English classes, and students are able to view their class options online as well. Our math merit gold prepared and presented a professional development activity and presented to over sixty math teachers across the state. We're very proud of their leadership capabilities. They are making Brandywine proud. Our drama department held their annual cabaret, and it went amazing. We have some talented Bulldogs here at Brandywine. It was awesome. And our BHS music department saw the Philadelphia Orchestra rehearse at the Kimmo Cultural Center. I'm very jealous. Should've been so fun. Thank you. Our world language students spent their spring break in Paris, the Riviera, and Rome, along with people from Concord, so I'm sure many new friendships were made. And our op talks are happening routinely in the College and Career Center with some of our very own staff members from our school. Pictured is our school resource officer talking about his day job in the school. He brought his canine companion, so you can imagine how popular that meeting was. And then also our Bulldogs rock their socks on World Down Syndrome Day. I always look forward to this day each year. It was a lot of fun. And I am sure that you have all heard our Solve For Tomorrow team, our finalists in the national competition, so please, please vote. We are so proud of them. Yes, they are repping Brandywine. Awesome. Alright, so Kate Williams was named Delaware's Billy Michael Student Leadership Awardee. So she is off to New Orleans to compete in a larger competition. We are very, very proud of her. And also one of our culinary teachers, Mrs. Denise Anderson, received Delaware's Pro Start Educator of Excellence. So we're all so proud of her, yes. And then our wonderful librarian, Ms. Wilson, received a shout out during National Library Librarian Week. So go, Ms. Wilson. I just have updates, so one second. So Student Council is organizing the Senior Soakers Event, which is a really fun way for seniors to spend their last couple of months. So we're excited for that, even though I don't get to participate because I'm a junior, but that's fine. And we are also in the final steps of planning for BSD Fest, which I am sure I will see everyone there, April twentieth, ten to two, here at Brandywine High School. Yes. Alright, and that is all for Brandywine's updates. Are there any questions and concerns or concerns?
Thank you for that very energetic report. Next up, Concord High School. Rashille and Katie, come on down.
Good evening, board members and fellow community members. My name is Katie Frampton, and I'm Concord Student Council Vice President. I'm here today with Rashille Patel, our president. Since our last meeting, we have had a lot of students and faculty at Concord, and we've definitely enjoyed our break. But we've still been busy with the community building and service at our school.
Before a break, students from our National Honor Society celebrated and appreciated our admin team by decorating personalized doors for each of their offices, as seen in the bottom two corners of the slide. We also got, uh, they also raised funds to provide the admin with catering for mows and goodie bags. They really enjoyed it. Speaking of our NHS, on the twenty-fifth of April, which is next Thursday, we will be holding inductions. There sixty-three new students will be welcomed into the National Honor Society.
We have definitely continued our support for the B Positive Foundation, raising seven thousand and three hundred dollars of our ten thousand dollar goal so far. Our baseball team has raised three hundred and forty dollars at a fundraiser at Anthony's on April tenth. Our boys lacrosse team also had a car wash at the Exxon on Concord Pike last Friday. They raised one thousand three hundred dollars, which is amazing. The Gay Street Alliance held a day of silence on April twelfth to protest the harmful and harassment and discrimination of the LGBTQ plus community, people in schools. On this day, participants and students were banned from talking, except when doing essential tasks.
Celebrating World Down Syndrome Day, Concord students and staff participated in Rock Your Socks Day on March twenty-first, wearing mismatched socks. It was heartwarming to hear our very own Aaron Janus speak to the entire cafeteria through a microphone about Rock Your Socks Day, followed by a loud round of applause. Nicole Fulmer, Gift of Life Ambassador, educated our tenth grade classes on the tenth grade health classes on the process of organ donation. This was a valuable lesson for all. She gave a very insightful presentation to educate our sophomore students. Furthermore, many of our students interested in the medical field went to Christiana Care and University of Delaware to learn clinical skills, CPR, and more about nursing, as seen in the top right.
Uh, next slide, please. So Concord had our prom fashion show, which is really fun, on March fifteenth. Seniors showed off their styles and countless dresses and tuxes to raise money for our after prom. Speaking of our seniors, they are already celebrating the achievements of committing to colleges as selective as the University of Pennsylvania, Northeastern University, the University of Tennessee, MyGamy, South Carolina, and Berkeley College of Music. We are also proud to be sending one of our students to the U.S. Marine Corps. Our students will be pursuing a variety of majors, such as computer science to architecture, international relations to fashion, business management, criminology, interior design, and even vocal performance, which is really cool.
On March twenty-seventh, U.S. history students took a trip to DC to see the Air and Space Museum, Lincoln Memorial, Vietnam Memorial, World War Two Memorial, the American History Museum, and the National History Museum. Phew, that's a lot. Over spring break, students went on a field trip to Paris and Italy, where they were enriched in the culture and language that they have been learning in their French and Italian classes for many years.
Both the Italian and Spanish students at our school took part in the World Language Showcase organized by the Delaware Council on the teachings of foreign languages. In teams, they prepared for weeks presenting insightful presentations on their knowledge, Italian folk and flamenco dances, doing escape rooms, and competing in competitions, winning dozens of awards. Senior awards for the Theater Department are coming up, which will include performances and trophies. And many of these students will be going on the field trip to New York City to see the hit musical on Broadway called Hatties Town.
We would also like to congratulate students Emily Lynch and Evan Mo, who were designated as Secretary of Education Scholars for their amazing hard work and dedication to the community. If you didn't know, that's the top two students who will be, end up being valedictorian and salutatorian with the highest weighted GPA. To remind you of the amazing sports winter, the amazing winter sports season we had, our basketball, swimming, and wrestling teams won over thirty-five DIAA All-State Awards. These are some of the most competitive sports in the state, and we are very proud of our athletes and very excited for the rest of the spring sports season. We also want to thank our beloved engineering teacher, Dr. S. Stock, known fondly by his students as Doc Stock, for receiving the Delaware Superstar in Education Award, for his exceptional work guiding all his students to make adaptive devices for persons with special needs. It is safe to say that he truly deserves this award.
In our student council, we are currently in the process of electing and voting on our new officers teams, and we're excited for them to continue our tradition of persistent involvement. We are also excited for the BSD Fest organized by the Student Councils of all three high schools that will be from ten AM to two PM on April twentieth, which is this Saturday. We invite everyone in the district community to have a good time while raising funds and awareness for mental health organizations such as the Shawn's House. Thank you, guys. Is there any questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, Mount Pleasant High School. Michael and Osman, come on down.
Hello, everyone. I am the Student Council President from Mount Pleasant High School, Michael Payne.
And I am the Student Council Vice President from Mount Pleasant High School. It's my big.
And so we'll start off our presentation talking about the blood drive. I personally had a blast being able to see some of my friends donate blood for the first time. Personally, my mom's life was saved from that during labor with my sister, so I really appreciated seeing everyone come out and support and have more accessibility to be able to donate blood. As for the bottom left, we can see our culinary teacher, Mr. Derp, with Mrs. Anderson from here, who won the Pro Star Educator of Excellence Award, and we were very proud of her. And at that very own fundraiser dinner, I worked with my fellow student, Michaela Grant, to work on making appetizers for the guests and interacting. It was an amazing experience to be able to just grill in the center of this amazing event with even the DuPont family there, which I thought was really intriguing. As for a lot of the photos on the right, I was on this trip and I, we, our group of about thirteen students was able to join students from a school in Virginia and go to Costa Rica over spring break, which was just an absolute blast, almost too much fun. But we, we just were here, there, and everywhere, San Jose, Guanacaste, eating food from actual locals, talking to locals in the markets. So it was an amazing experience for language immersion, and I personally feel that I came back just that tiny bit more fluent. That's going to be perfect for my Spanish exams this May.
Next slide. So current events. So probably the most current event, I've talked about it up all, uh, all year here, is our freshman fundraiser for NPH's Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-seven. So this is something that's happening at Chick-fil-A right now at the Concord Mall, and it's meant to be a fundraiser for the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-seventh's funds, which will most likely go to their prom. And it's really fun. A lot of people are looking forward to it, and I hear it's a very fun time right now. Spirit Break is also going on for BSD Fest, and also Blue Gold for upcoming five K, which is happening this Sunday, upcoming Sunday. Guys, go check it out. Today was matching Monday, where students got to match outfits with their friends or anyone else they saw. Tomorrow will be told this Tuesday, where students can bring anything but a backpack. And last year, a lot of people brought suitcases. There's a guitar case there, too. Really excited to see what people can bring, how creative people can be. Wednesday is Wits versus Workouts, Sports Gear versus Smarty Look. Time Travel Thursday, where students dress from different sort of stages of life. I know the lowerclassmen are the youngest, highest classmate are the oldest, and the staff are teenagers, which I personally am very excited to see how that works. And Friday is Blue and Gold Makes Green, where students wear blue and gold, or also Mount Pleasant Green, show the support for the school, and also Blue Gold. Senior Prom Ticket fundraiser is also happening right now with Joe Corby's Pizza. So to help offset some of the costs of our prom ticket this year for seniors, there is a fundraiser going on with Joe Corby's Pizza, where students are able to sell items off Joe Corby's menu, and they can raise up to two tickets. And it's very fun. If you guys ever run into anyone who's selling these, please do buy. So it's very good food, from what I've heard, and it really helps out the students. And unfortunately, our, we are currently preparing for our exam season coming up for AP and IB testing. It's something we've, I can't believe that we're already here. Two years flew by. But I know we're all fighting through the senior race, trying to make sure that we can do as well as we can on our tests.
Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. So actually, on Wednesday, we have our Gender and Sexuality Alliance meeting, and we have a special guest speaker to speak about the science and the culture behind actual transitioning.
As I mentioned earlier, our Steps for Inclusion Blue Gold Five K Run is happening this Sunday. So it's a fundraiser for the Delaware Foundation for Reaching Citizens with Intellectual Disabilities, where you can sign up and help raise awareness and support everyone in our community. And it's a very fun day to be with friends, to be with, to be with friends and family. And I really recommend you guys go check it out if you can, if you have the time. It's a really cool event, and it's absolutely amazing what we've been able to pull off. If you do want to get involved, I believe you can scan the QR code right up there, or you can also contact Ms. Mullen at Mount Pleasant High School.
So we also have the Senior Assassin and Senior Sunset Events, which are two very different sort of senior fundraisers and nice little trademarks that we like to leave our, every single senior class with this sort of annual tradition of a fun competition, and then some sort of fun memory that will happen just before prom, and then we'll get into that prom, graduation, senior week sort of madness.
Our game of Senior Assassin also happened today. Lots of students are very excited for that. Can't wait to see how that goes.
The Up for Learning Retreat will be at the end of April, wherein students from all three high schools will be able to come together and discuss different ideas on how to improve the relationships between students and staff and improve those sort of communications that allow for students to have their own input in the culture and community at their schools. So I'm very excited for that. I'm personally a member of this association. And here at Mount Pleasant High School, personally, we had the opportunity to implement a mental health sanctuary that we call the Zen Den, which has been very successful, and a lot of the underclassmen seem like they're going to be using it for their entire session throughout high school. Sure. So High School Radio Day is also coming up, and our resident radio program teacher, Mr. Rishen Grad, is just elated. It's his favorite time of the year, and we, be sure to stay tuned to WMPH Radio to see more fun events like interviews with high schools all across the country.
Exam season is also coming up. I guess it's more so looking forward to after exam season, after we've taken all those tests and done all the hard work for the entire year.
And finally, personally, my favorite, because as you can tell, we like to dress up. We are very much looking forward to prom and graduation, and that's about everything that we've had since last meeting. Thank you.
I want to have any questions, comments?
I, I just have a question. You're the Up for Learning. Is that the Student Voice Advisory Conference that's on our calendar?
Yes.
Okay. I do plan on attending.
See you there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That moves us on to special presentations. Dr. Kutch, am I having deja vu?
You are, but we have some really great news. So Brandywine High School STEM team of students here tonight, Livia Erskine, Catherine McDerby, Isabella Chirmark, and Malte John. They have been named, I know it's different now, they have been named one of ten national finalists in the fourth annual Samsung Solve For Tomorrow Competition. That's right. So last time, it was the Delaware Awardee, now one of ten out of fifty. Amazing. So you may be curious, because of this, they're receiving fifty thousand dollars in Samsung technology and classroom supplies. This is absolutely the second year in a row that a team from Brandywine High School has been chosen as a national finalist. It's like lightning in a bottle. No coincidence. Top-notch programming and top-notch students and teachers. So for those that may be listening as well, just explain real briefly, Samsung Solve For Tomorrow is a national competition designed to empower students in grades six through twelve to leverage the power of STEM to create innovative solutions addressing critical issues in their local communities. So just to give you a little taste, and you're going to get a little bit more tonight, we're going to show this video, so you can see it kind of in a nutshell.
Special education teachers are challenged every day to help their students make meaningful connections with their classmates.
The things that they do and learn, it's different. It's different for them, and they need different technologies.
Our teachers needed something more, and we wanted to help. At once, board games came to mind as a perfect solution.
Board games have been a vital part of our childhoods. However, while we easily manipulate the small pieces in common games, students with disabilities cannot. We needed to redesign board games to extend these social benefits to all students. So far, we have created two adaptive board games inspired by chutes and ladders and Connect Four.
Committed to seamlessly accommodating all abilities, we incorporated feedback from special education teachers and designed our games to be controlled by adaptive and interchangeable buttons. We also added audiovisual feedback and a color scheme that makes it easier for the visually impaired and colorblind to see, creating social interaction that would not exist otherwise. We first designed our games in CAD, ensuring that the game board fits together securely, uses space efficiently, and is lightweight and portable. We make our game board out of plywood, as it is a recyclable material, and we laser cut the parts for an energy-efficient process with a small carbon footprint. To simplify the wiring process, we have designed and manufactured a custom-printed circuit board that incorporates a microcontroller, a soundboard, LEDs, buttons, and a speaker. This greatly reduces the time it takes to assemble our game, as well as reduces waste wire used and generated by our project.
Once the game is constructed, we upload our code, which handles player state, checks for a win, and controls the LEDs and sound. Each game is powered by a small rechargeable mobile battery pack, eliminating toxic waste created by traditional batteries.
Adapting these board games now provides these students with the opportunity to go through life now playing a game, participating with their family, participating with friends. So what I'm most excited to see is what's next.
Our games have generated significant demand from schools outside our district, as well as assisted living facilities, broadening our target audience from children to people of all ages.
These switch-adapted games that are made to be totally inclusive, the residents are able to do it one hundred percent on their own, which is such a big, important thing for them.
The demand is so great, we sought out expert advice on ways to scale up production and expand our reach.
I work for Hasbro Toys. We make Monopoly, Sari, and Jenga, and just being able to take those game experiences to make them more accessible, I think it's absolutely something that can be mass-produced in that sustainable way, reducing the environmental impact. Just a really impressive group of young people who are trying to make the world a better place.
Wow. So at this time, please join us on the stage, Malte, Livia, Kate, and Isabella. Now, next week, they're going to be traveling to Washington, DC for the last part of this competition, where they're going to be onstage, very much like this, making a pitch around their product. And so tonight, we'd like to provide them an opportunity to make this pitch now to you, the board, for your feedback, maybe shake off some nervous cobwebs.
Alright, hello, everyone. So you got a quick overview of our game, but we'd like to take a little bit more in-depth in what we did. Okay, so it seems like our presentation didn't port over very well. Supposed to have a video back, but we'll just, we'll just deal with the still picture frame, and it'll be fine. Okay, so this is Frankie, and she's a student at Springer Middle School. And as you can see, Frankie has a few disabilities, so she has some physical disabilities, and so she has visual impairments and hearing impairments. So this makes it harder for her to interact with a lot of common experiences like board games. However, Frankie is such a joyous person. She's such like a beacon of light. So it's really important for us and for her that she has these social interactions and spreads this joy. So Frankie isn't alone. Nineteen percent of all public school students in Delaware are enrolled in some special education program. And across the US, seven point three million students have some sort of disability. So what we learned from a lot of special education teachers while we were researching for this project is how important play is for social, emotional, cognitive, language, and self-regulation skills. So these are skills that you can only like pick up through interacting with other people and playing games. But the problem is, this is a person named Charlie. We met him at the Mary Campbell Center, and he explained it to us really well. Basically, what he told us was that they try to play common games, but the issue is that a lot of games have small pieces that make people with disabilities unable to interact with them. So what ends up happening is they become spectators to a social engagement that they should be part of, because their caretakers or their therapists or their teachers are the ones actually moving the game pieces for them. So they need a way of independently engaging in these social experiences. So this is where we decided to create universally-designed board games. So you can see this game uses lights, sound, and these accessible buttons for people with disabilities to be able to interact with. And what we tried to do was make sure that no matter what your ability level is, you're still able to interact with this game. And this game is our final prototype after multiple iterations, because we took a lot of feedback from teachers and therapists across the state. One of the important things is we added a lot more audio feedback, because we were working with a lot more visually impaired students at the Leach School. And we also added toggle switches in here to switch the game in different modes. So in some modes, they press fewer buttons if they can't press the buttons as easily as others. And of course, before our games were in our physical final prototype, we just had a CAD model. So here's, that's what's displayed here, and we used box joints to make a seamless fit for the game to easily be assembled. And then, as you could see in the photo before, the buttons are added, but of course, these can be input with anything into the jack to make it accessible for what this student needs. And our reusable battery pack is a very sustainable solution and doesn't, you know, release a bunch of toxic waste into the environment. So we use our sustainable plywood to make the board game, and it's, we're just trying to create solutions all around. Our custom-printed circuit board incorporates a microcontroller, a soundboard, our LEDs, buttons, and our speaker, just to integrate everything into one place, so it's very easily packed within the game. And of course, with a lot of technology comes a lot of code. So this tracks the player and win state, prevents out-of-turn and extra button presses, so that the student can learn errorlessly and see the cause and effect of their actions without inhibiting the rest of the game.
So I designed the physical appearance of the games on a digital drawing app, and I designed it so that the colors would be best for those with color blindness. So the dark background against the bright lights makes it very easy to see what's going on in the games, and then the red and blue contrast each other. I also designed the box for when we eventually scale up and market our games. So we tested our games in many different locations with many different people of all ages and all ability levels. So this is Frank Hughes. He is an educator at the John G. Leach School, and he communicated to us that our games really helped bridge the gap between students with disabilities and their families, and made connections so that they learn skills that they need to do in the real world. So this slide looks awful because the animations aren't working. So basically, I'll just sum this slide up. We, we made a survey. We sent out a survey to all the people that we tested our games with, just asking for feedback, and 100% of them said that they would purchase our game and they would recommend it to others. Also, 100% of them said that our games made a positive impact on their students or their residents.
So our final price for our project for each unit was $83.91. And then from that survey, we found that they were willing to spend $150 per game. So that means that there would be a 44% profit. So while this is a good price for local manufacturing, as demand increases, we knew that we were going to need a cheaper and easier process. So this led us to want to streamline and mass manufacture through creating an injection mold, which would allow there to be less, it would be less labor-intensive, and also it would create a uniform and clean product every single time.
Yeah, so we just wanted to leave off with, it was actually a very nice video clip, but it's fine. What we wanted to leave off with was the idea, the central mission behind our project, and that's really just creating these joyous interactions and allowing all students to experience like the fun, social experience of playing board games with your friends. So, thank you. So you have one of our board games on your desk. So if you could plug in the battery pack to the USB, you should see it should. Second, turn on game. Yeah. So you can take the buttons down and like put them in front, but the yellow button, oh, there we go. Turned on. So the yellow button is the dice, and the colored button moves you through. So if you can press the green button now, okay, maybe it's flipped. Try the yellow. Oh, you know what? I'm gonna go down. Something's on.
Dinner meant salad away there.
I think it was just this person. So there is multiple modes on here. So if you come play, we see the dice roll.
Awesome.
I think it's different. Okay, so this is our dice roll button, and this button moves you through the game. So it's the red turn right now. So if I rolled a dice. Okay, it's the red's turn. So now we rolled the dice. You can see it rolls a four. So what we can do is we can click this button, and we can move it four times and get to our spot. There we go. We hit a ladder. So now, if you try on your side.
Good practice.
And the good thing is, it won't let you move more than you rolled. So if someone were to press the button a ton of times, it won't let you cheat. It'll just do the exact dice roll that you rolled.
Yeah. So now here's something that we were told to adapt in our game was, so sometimes, oh, this is not a good example. You roll a one. You can try on your. Okay, so you rolled a four. So maybe you don't really want to press the button four times. Maybe that's like, takes a while for a lot of students. So what we can do is you can just flip this toggle switch, and now if you tap your button, it'll just go for you, and it'll simulate the game. Same thing here. And you can just switch in between modes of the game, which is important. Yeah, so that's pretty much an example of our game. So I just want to know if you guys had any questions for us?
Questions, comments from the board? I'll just say, I mean, I'm in awe of your intellect, your drive, your compassion to create such a product. And, you know, regardless of the outcome, you're a top-10 national finalist. I think you guys checked all the boxes for all the things that, the thought that you could have put into this. I think you're going to do great in the competition and represent Brandywine well. You already have.
I actually, I have a question, maybe for Dr. Kutch or you guys. Was this something, so you're all seniors, correct?
Yes.
This was something that you started, which year of your CTE pathway?
Yeah, so this was my junior year engineering project. And so the first prototype ever of the Chutes and Ladders game was my final project of the engineering pathway. It was my third year in the pathway.
So in your pathway, were you guys all working in your engineering program together as a group of four, or no?
No, so it was my individual project, and then I decided to come together as a group of four.
Okay, so this year, you've been as a group?
Yeah.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
I just want to point out that what is on the back of their t-shirts, I advocate for women in engineering, so thank you so much for all of those who have advocated for women in engineering. So awesome.
All the reason to be in awe.
Yeah, Mr. Scroba, just a, oh.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Just a few words. First, you know, I've said this before, what our students are doing in high school just blows me away. I was in shop in high school. I made a cutting board for my mom and a candle, and a candle stand. And that was pretty good for back. I see a lot of head nods in the audience. And these guys are building custom circuit boards and writing code. And the whole focus on empathy and serving others with your own talents and abilities. So I applaud you. And I would ask that if there are parents or relatives of those four amazing young women engineers in the audience, that you stand and. Congratulations to you as well. And just in awe, ladies, thank you for not only representing Brandywine, but for showing all of us, reminding all of us that we are to use our talents and abilities to help others. What a lesson. Thank you.
So I just have two last things. One, I also want to thank the team. You know, we heard thanks to Jordan Estock tonight with Superstars in Education. All three of our buildings were recognized for that award, but these four young ladies were part of the interview process with the judges in making that determination with the Delaware State Chamber of Commerce. And so you see, but really, thank you. Couldn't have done it without you. So thanks for that. And one last shameless plug for them. Of the 10 national finalists, one community choice winner will be named, receiving an additional $10,000 prize package. And so from now till April 23rd, 2024, and you may have seen these on our social media pages, but the community can cast their votes for our high school STEM team just by simply watching and clicking on Brandywine High School on the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow website and submitting their choice. There's a QR code there on this slide. So for those of you that are in the audience, please just hold up your phones. You can vote right now. Those of you watching from home, and we have quite a few, please, you can do it very quickly. Go on the website and vote right now. Click on Brandywine High School. Help this fantastic STEM team win this award. And so just one last time, let's congratulate them and wish them well when they go to Washington.
Thank you, Dr. Kutch. Next up, Ms. Jones Davis with an elementary basketball update.
Thank you very much. It is always powerful when our district takes the time to recognize the excellence in our district. So thank you again for our students, parents, teachers, and everyone involved in the excellence that was demonstrated a few minutes ago. This evening, we will also give special recognition to Dr. Avery Sherrod and Jessica Crawford. I will call them up in a few minutes. We have two outstanding athletic rock star leaders here. During the pandemic, elementary basketball was placed on hold, which I mentioned last year as well. However, many of our elementary schools continued offering some degree of basketball practice during after-school, but it just was not the same as Elementary Basketball League. Each year, we continue to increase the number of families, staff, and community members who attend our weekly games, championships, and cheerleading showcase. If you drove by any of the high schools during our elementary basketball playoffs or championships, you would have thought that it was a high school game, limited to no parking space. These two individuals made sure that it was clear to our coaches, as well as our athletes, that learned the skill and foundation of basketball and cheerleading, that the most important thing was to demonstrate sportsmanship and respect. These rock stars expressed to our athlete, "Without character, your skills will not be valued." They arranged all reservations for booking facilities, making a meeting with athletes, meeting with basketball and cheerleading coaches, involved high school athletes at several games to warm up with our elementary athletes, build relationships with students and families, always thinking outside the box, demonstrated professionalism while addressing challenges, created game schedules, recruited coaches, and also referees, and so much more. Their love and commitment for our students is the trust and relationships that are provided through them. They are respected by their colleagues, students, and the community. At this time, I would like to bring up Dr. Sherrod, Avery Sherrod, and Jessica Chambers, or Crawford themselves. Please come on up. Please give them a huge, huge hand. Seriously, I think this year may have been the largest turnout from our community and families we have ever seen. It was truly their leadership that made it happen. I would like to read the acknowledgement on the certificate. "For each dedication to promoting teamwork, sportsmanship, and school spirit through the Brandywine School District Elementary Basketball League, your efforts have enriched the lives of everyone involved, fostering a love for the game and creating lasting memories for all." Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next up, Dr. Kutch and Dr. Warner, progress of National Alliance for Partnership in Equity.
Good evening, President Scroba, Vice President Heller, board members, Superintendent Holder, esteemed guests. Tonight, we're providing an update on the exciting work we're doing around increasing underrepresented groups and non-traditional students in our career and technical programming with the National Alliance Partnership for Equity, NAEP, in the Pipeline Project. The National Alliance Partnership in Equity aims to advance equity in education and workforce development. Specifically, this initiative focuses on addressing racial disparities and supporting students with disabilities in accessing and succeeding in STEM, or I'm sorry, CTE pathways, have STEM on the mind. CTE pathways offer valuable, valuable opportunities for students to gain practical skills and prepare for successful careers. However, disparities do exist in access and outcomes, particularly for students of color and those with disabilities. Achieving equity in CTE is essential for creating pathways to economic mobility and reducing systemic barriers. The primary goals of the NAEP partnership are to increase access to high-quality CTE programs for students from historically marginalized communities, improve retention and success rates for students of color and those with disabilities in CTE pathways, provide support and resources to educators to create inclusive learning environments. And to achieve these goals, the partnership employs various strategies that include collaborating with schools to identify and address systemic barriers to equity, offer professional development opportunities for our teachers on culturally responsive teaching and inclusive practices, and provide resources and tools to support the recruitment and retention of diverse students in CTE programming. So we wanted to just share tonight our participation, what we did, how we participate, and a little bit of the history behind what we've done. It's benefited our district in several ways, including strengthening our commitment to equity and diversity, enhancing the quality and inclusivity of our CTE programs, empowering students from all backgrounds to pursue and succeed in career pathways of their choice. And most recently, we were recognized as Superstars in Education, just putting that out there again, for our engineering programs in the Brandywine School District. And the work really that we've done, attending to these programmatic changes to increase enrollment and retention in engineering, specifically focusing on gender, can be attributed to our involvement with NAEP and also our work that we were just recently recognized for, again, with Superstars in Education. So where did we start? Well, we began this work to increase the number of females in engineering in about the fall of 2017. So that was seven years ago. Pipeline, as you saw before, stands for Program Improvement Process for Equity in STEM. And using NAEP and our own research, we still continue this work and use methods we created as a result of this project. And you can see some of the pictures up here. I'll describe what's happening on the next slide. But as you see, girls involved visiting middle schools and then participating in hands-on exercises. So that year, we had a goal to reduce and eliminate barriers to increase more females in our engineering programming. And look at those numbers, 6%. That's where we started. 6% as compared to their male counterparts that we had in the particular pathway, with the goal of reaching 33%, and then increasing pathway completers to 20%. And what that means, if you're a completer, you've completed all three years of that particular pathway. We identified areas to be wary of, such as stereotype threats. We found out in surveying the girls what a difference it made when their middle school teacher, whether it was in science, math, maybe a CTE course, patted them on the back and said, hey, you know what? You're really good at this. You should consider doing this, whether it's in high school or after high school. And besides having someone in their life that had that kind of influence, that made the greatest impact. And what that relates to is their own sense of self-efficacy. Some of them were unaware of the pathway itself, didn't know what it was about. There was what we call mismatch data. Judd's still here, but he helped us spearhead that. But when students were taking a survey, a career survey, that basically placed them, said, hey, you know, you're good at this, or you're interested in this, you should grow up and be this, to give them some guidance in eighth grade and picking a pathway. They took that data and found that sometimes there was a mismatch. So whereas maybe a girl... So whereas maybe a girl was, um, connected to engineering from the survey, they chose something else. That was a mismatch. And so we dug in on that. Why was that happening? Or maybe they didn't pick it at all. Why was that happening? Or they didn't pick a pathway and their survey data said they would be great at engineering? We purposely scheduled them into that pathway. Another strategy that came out of this was middle school visits where our high school engineering females, ten from each of the high schools would come to each of our middle schools for visits and basically walk them through the program, what it was all about, what interested them about it, did a question-answer session, some panels, and then engage them in hands-on opportunities of other things that they might be learning about, things like you saw today. All right, maybe not as complicated, but certainly something that they could see that they could achieve if they themselves were in that pathway. That made a huge, huge difference. And in fact, we built the capacity that we continue to do this today. In fact, we just held them last month. The next step that we started doing was inviting the middle schools to go to the high schools to see the lab area, to see what it would be like, kind of like trying head-on for a little while, seeing if they could picture themselves there in helping, encouraging them to pick and persist in that pathway. And I'm happy to say that we've maintained 30% plus of females enrolled in the engineering pathway and we're still working on the attrition rate, but continued, continued to work towards that initial goal of 33%.
Good evening. I'm going to discuss a little bit our work with Pipeline as it relates to students with disabilities. We began our work with the Pipeline for Students with Disabilities in fall of 2020. The goal of the project was to increase participation, persistence, and program completion of students with disabilities in CTE courses. We formed a team with teachers, school-based administrators, district administrators as well for this work. And our initial focus back in 2020 was looking at working with the data related, as it related to Brandywine High School. And so this is an overview of what we discovered in that initial year, 2020, 2021. We met with the NAP staff and we went through their process, which was to organize the data, explore it, discover, select some kind of action, and then act and look at what our results were. In that first year, we reviewed disaggregated data to identify students with disabilities and who was enrolled in what CTE pathway. We found at Brandywine High School specifically, there were 46.5% of students with disabilities enrolled in a CTE pathway. However, as we looked at some of the data, we recognized that there were some reasons why more students with disabilities perhaps were not participating. And one of our big considerations out of that was the lack of knowledge about these CTE pathways themselves and how students initially get that introduction in the middle school and that students with disabilities are often in an academic support classroom. In these classrooms, they're getting some pre-teaching and reteaching, as well as instruction related to their IEP goals. But being in those classrooms actually takes away an opportunity for an exploratory course or a CTE course at the middle school level. And so being in these classrooms limited those opportunities. We also thought about perceived level of difficulty when you look at some of the names and titles of the courses and whether or not students perhaps opted out of them because they perceived them to be difficult. Our action resource, or research rather, was to look at middle school schedules. So we took a group of then ninth graders and we went back and looked at the courses they participated in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. From that, we found that 100% of those students were in an academic support class. And because that runs for a full year, that limited two opportunities where they could have participated in an exploratory or CTE course. We also reviewed completion rates of Major Clarity, which is a program that we use to take a look at student interests and potential pathways in the middle school. And there about 66% of students with disabilities were completing that information. And then we also surveyed some students from Brandywine High School to get a better understanding about whether their interest matched with the pathway they were in. That was 50%. And we also asked them questions about their perceived difficulty of those classrooms at that time. So our first year was primarily looking at the data. As a result from that, we refined our hypothesis a bit and we selected some strategies that some of them coincidentally fit right, nice with our, our work. And one of those was the change with the middle school schedule from a block schedule to a seven-drop-one. It gave more opportunities for more courses and participating those at the middle school level. There was also a revision to the middle school course guide, which then now includes CTE pathways. The counselors, there was some work with them in identifying the top three career matches and utilizing that, as well as a survey that the students completed to really make sure that we were gaining their interest and using that to make determinations about their schedules. We had some nice results that year. We went from 66% of students with disabilities who were in eighth grade only in one CTE, or completing at least one CTE, to 82% of students with disabilities. And we also had an increase in the number of students who went into that freshman year having a match between what their interest in career pathway was and what they were participating in with CTE. The following year, we had a little bit of a late start with NAP. We didn't get kicked off until about halfway through the year. So that year was mostly, again, looking at data and trying to determine what our next steps would be. And again, we continued. The whole process is about refining your hypotheses and continuing to grow. So we moved on and we did a action research with some eighth graders in academic support classrooms. There was a questionnaire and we were asking those eighth graders to tell us what kind of topics they would engage in if they participated in one of our BSD pathways. We also asked them what were some of the jobs or careers that they might participate in or engage in if they had gone through it. We had a range of responses, but between 40 and 61% of students did not really know the topics related to the pathways and really couldn't name careers. And so we also asked them at that point, just to understand better why they selected the pathways they did. And 60% said personal interest, others just picked one, or there was influence from their teachers or possibly their parents as well. So I'm going to introduce Dave Walls, who's our Coordinator of Secondary Special Education, who's going to talk about where we are now in this year.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This year, we continued our focus with the middle school and we built off the data that we had reviewed from last spring. Our team gathered information and we set two goals for ourselves. The first being to increase the number of eighth graders with disabilities who could demonstrate an understanding of the pathways and potential jobs and careers. We also wanted our special education teachers to be able to develop activities or transitional activities in their IEPs so they could plan better and help plan, building the knowledge that the students had with CTE pathways. And from there, we developed Plugged Into the Future. This program that we developed is a scope and sequence of skills and designed to focus in on those CTE pathways that students may not have background knowledge in. We're working with our seventh and eighth grade students to build that background knowledge. It's a tool to give additional information about the CTE pathways and their associated careers and, um, jobs later on in life. As Dr. Warner mentioned, these are the students who are not receiving the opportunities through their additional courses at the middle school level. So twice a month, the middle school academic support teachers are incorporating the provided lessons and activities to their academic support class. There are about eight lessons. There are eight lessons. They each focus on building that background knowledge for our students in the academic support setting so they understand the CTE pathways better. And then our students in Plugged Into the Future, what they're doing is really focusing on that course catalog and understanding the course catalog and the CTE pathways that are in the course catalog. We also incorporated what Mick Austin did for us. She developed videos for our students to understand each one of the CTE pathways, which incorporated all of our students in the current CTE pathways, including, I may be a little biased, but the computer science one, which has my son in it, who also has a disability. We also incorporated specific lessons from the Major Clarity that align with each one of those pathways. So the teachers have these lessons and are developing that background knowledge. There's also additional resources and information given to the teachers and the students so they can build upon that information that they're learning in the Plugged Into the Future program. So our next step is to survey our students and test their knowledge of what knowledge they've gained from the Plugged Into the Future program. But we also want to solicit information from our teachers and understanding what they understand about CTE pathways, but also how they can help further develop that information for our students in getting a more focused delivery of instruction for our students in the CTE pathway understanding.
I just have to give a few more kudos to the work that Nicole and Dave and their team have done. The lessons and the scope and sequence that are here tied back to the videos on the previous slide are tremendous. So when you do receive this PowerPoint, I do implore you to take a look at it. It's wonderful, wonderful work. I mean, great job. Okay, so this year, this year, we have started our racial equity pipeline. We are currently in year one. You can see our goal here. We've stated work towards increasing the percentage of African-American Black students in high-wage STEM pathways to be more representative of the school demographics of 2025. What we identified, those particular pathways being engineering, computer science, biomedical at both Brandywine and Concord. You might wonder, well, where's Mau? Mau is doing a fantastic job already with their demographics and the students that they have enrolled in these career pathways. So we want to focus in a little deeper on the two high schools. Right now, the way that Nicole had explained before, there is a cycle or cyclic process to this action research that we do. We have a proposed root cause right now. Students that are enrolled in pathways aren't always interested in it and therefore they don't complete it, meaning they change or drop into a different pathway. That's the one, the hypothesis in a way. Let's move to the next slide and it's me. Okay, so using the same framework, using and focusing in on the particular goal, we use several tools from NAP that they provide us. They have research where we can identify particular root causes based on racial equity or disproportionality. We also use student voice. This is an important piece. We work directly with students. We have them as part of our team. They come to the meetings and come to the meetings. They may Zoom, like if we're meeting in Dover, and they provide their input as well. We also use student surveys. And in particular, our student survey that we conducted with them, we surveyed all ninth and 10th grade students. So if you think of the numbers of ninth and 10th grade students together in two high schools, that's roughly, I don't know, 800, 1,000, 1,600 kids roughly, let's say. But we had 183 complete the survey. So little, what, 10%? So keep that in mind, but this is, this is what we work with. We take a look at the data results, even if it's a 10% survey across the board. We found out that 30% didn't even hear about the pathways, which was concerning, given the fact that, you know, we have a course catalog, we have course selection with our counselors, what's going on. And then when we disaggregated a bit more, we found our students of color, 68% stated that they did not select their pathway or they weren't sure why they were in that pathway. 47% white students did not select their pathway or weren't sure about their pathway. So both sets of numbers troubling that it's that high. So we wanted to dig in a little deeper and understand the why. And right now, this week and next week, we're holding student focus groups to dig a little deeper, to be able to ask a little bit more pointed questions of what was happening from their perspective. Again, getting student voice. And so in addition to that, we're scheduling meetings with students to help publicize and increase student understanding around the pathways. We also want to be sure that we're increasing the number of students in higher-level courses, again, to develop that self-efficacy I spoke about earlier, how important that is in math and science courses. So as to Nicole and Dave's point of some of these pathways seem like, oh, you know, bio, or biomedical or computer science, engineering, it sounds like you have to be, you know, get to really know your stuff. I'm not sure if I'm good in that, trying to lift them up, lift their sense of self-efficacy up and their interest in understanding what those pathways are all about. And so that maybe they would enroll in it and they wouldn't think it was, you know, to keep away from it because it was so hard. Um, and, oh. I have the clicker. So one of the other things that we're looking to do is improve the course selection process and increase students taking higher-level courses. Another important piece to this are teachers. Teachers are on our team as well, in addition to counselors. And the teacher voice, you talk about aha moments. We have aha moments all the time. You think we know it, like we go through, I think I know what the solution is. You've got to stop, take a breath. Because when we conduct these surveys and collect that teacher voice, there's something that always rises to the occasion. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Heidi Corbin, who is our business CTE teacher at PS DuPont, to talk a little bit about that.
Good evening, everyone. I was happy to be a part of this program because my, my first year as a business teacher was last year and I was introduced to Major Clarity and Major Clarity was a game changer for me. I taught English before. I'm a transplant to Delaware, so understanding pathways, I started as a parent and now I'm on the other side. So I, it was really vital for me to get involved in this process. The one thing I noticed is awareness. There's lack of awareness of pathways at the middle school level. And at PS DuPont, you probably know, we have a lot of shifting of people in our building. And a lot of times, people come from other states like I did. I grew up in Pennsylvania and started my teaching career in Pennsylvania. So pathways was new to me. And if I wasn't an educator, I probably wouldn't have asked as many questions as I did as a parent. But also I noticed that at the middle school level, the teachers and staff don't know everything about the pathways too. And we're a critical piece to them moving into high school. So the lack of awareness of the pathways was one thing we were going to work on. And as the CTE department chair at our school now, I've been having intentional conversations with our team members about that. The other thing is school choice. That was an exciting thing when I moved to Delaware, but people don't know. I don't think that you can choice within your district. They think they have to leave if what they don't have is at their feet or school. So another thing that we want to work on is making sure students, the staff, and the parents all know that if you don't have a choice in Mount Pleasant, you can choose to Brandywine and Concord. You don't have to leave us and go other places. And also to remedy that, I had the counselors come into my classroom and we use Major Clarity. First of all, there's a personality assessment, a learning styles assessment. I tell the kids, be honest. Do not answer like your mom and dad. Don't answer like me. Your best friends across the room, don't look at them. I need you to answer honestly because there's an algorithm that's going to give you some information about yourself that you wouldn't realize. And out of the three top career paths that are given to them, at least two where they were surprised about. And then you go in, you watch videos, you actually rate whether it's for you or not, then move on to the next career path. So they're looking at things that they may never have looked at before. With that being said, the eighth-grade counselor comes in, we open up Major Clarity, they have their career pathways. They have their career choices and then there's the pathways. We have it on paper, we have it on the screen, multiple ways because it takes seven to eight times before somebody responds to something. That was only two. I also have those lovely videos posted in my Schoology page to keep reiterating. that these options are there, and here's our three schools that will offer it. We scheduled the eighth graders as if every one of them was going to go to a Brandywine school. We know some of them were leaving, but we say, guess what? We have your groundwork laid for our pathways, just so you know. And I think that calmed them down a little bit. Forgive me, I'm not really great at public speaking, unless it's students. I'd be great if y'all were all eighth graders, I'd be nailing it right now.
Do you want us to act up?
Could you? And I just stopped and I just like give you the mom look. That will work perfectly. But what I found, and I think I've been an advocate of this even before coming to Delaware, was student voice. And I think once, they actually create career posters in my room, that's another piece where they see things, and there's pathways in my room. So there's always these connectors, but it's only happening in my classroom. It's probably not happening in other places. I have people on my CTE team that are from Maryland. So I got to make sure they understand the pathways. So awareness and empowerment is what the key is. And I'll tell you, and Michelle and Vicky, they love when I talk about major clarity, because to me that was a game changer. Because even when I was an EL teacher, learning styles was how I connected with my kids and helped them to believe in themselves. So the last thing, the overall goal for me, making sure our teachers have, not just teachers, the entire building knows about our pathways. The entire building knows we have school shows, choice, you have choice, you have first dibs over the Brandywine schools instead of trying to seek things elsewhere. And you should see what we have, and a lot of kids are surprised about what we have in our school. We want to make sure that we light all the runway lights so they can see their journey and have the knowledge. And if that's not for them, they could pivot towards another pathway that will light for them too. We want to make sure we reiterate the power and power of the knowledge gained in major clarity. Make sure the CTA staff have current information on BSD pathways. Expose students to a variety of CTE courses and topics at the middle school level, and I'm working on that diligently at PS. And I'm sure I'll be talking to the teachers at the other middle school buildings. And overall, our goal is to increase self-awareness, to connect with confident career goals that are fostered and aligned with our enriching pathway programs, which represent empowering possibilities.
Thank you. Questions?
I have two questions, maybe comments. When it comes to the CTE pathway in the middle schools, I think, are there CTE coordinators in each of the middle schools or just this fabulous teacher at PS?
So we do have department chairs, so I guess I'm thinking that might be how you're thinking about coordinators. But we do have department chairs for that in each of the middle schools.
I think, having had four children, I have an eighth grader now, and she knows what her siblings went through and the pathways that her siblings went through. I would just like to say, hopefully it's something that is being discussed with the students in eighth grade prior to the choice window and not waiting until they are doing their course selections. Because if they hadn't had the opportunity to make the choice window and there's a biomedical interest, that they've missed that opportunity. So that would be my one question or comment. The other is about students, I, CTE is a college or a high school graduation requirement, correct?
So completing a pathway is a high school graduation requirement. It could be a CTE pathway, or it could be a non-CTE pathway.
So can you explain what a non-CTE?
Yes, science, dance, art, or language.
I thought those were also all falling under the same.
Sorry, yes.
Okay. I didn't realize that, that, so a student who chooses like photography or arts, there, that's not a CTE pathway, but that is a pathway.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm curious, and it could be totally not related, but as I'm sitting and listening to the presentation, and particularly with regards to the racial equity in CTE, I'm wondering if you have, if anyone has considered or looked at, if there's a correlation between how students are recommended and referred, which is sort of kind of just by teacher discretion for honors and AP classes? Because I definitely know there's a racial disparity there. And, and the correlation between some of these high paying CTE tracks. And I don't know if anyone has looked at that, I certainly would encourage us to look at that. Because my hypothesis, and it's just a hypothesis from having students, my own children go through, sort of navigate that, is there seems to, I wonder how much of the teacher treatment or sort of the student experience through elementary school into middle school as to whether or not they're being referred for honors classes and AP classes, which don't always directly connect with their abilities. Sometimes students do have the abilities but are not recommended because of other factors. If that shapes their perception of whether they belong in some of those, or not belong, but whether they would have the same opportunities within those CTE tracks once they get to high school. If we've looked at that, or if anyone has considered that, because I certainly suspect that they're probably connected.
We're in, as I said, we're in the year one, but certainly looking at the course recommendation process. As you're referring to that sense of like, am I good at it? Or do I think it's too hard? And did somebody encourage me or believe in me, or did I have those opportunities? Absolutely looking at that.
And because a lot of those classes, a lot of those tracks, in order to get accepted into colleges in those majors, require a certain level of classes at the high school levels that those same students are not always given the opportunity to take. Or at the very least, they're recommended or steered away from so that students aren't going to pick that track as a major, because they, they, there's just too much of a gap between what they've had the opportunity to experience while they were in BSD versus being able to be college and career ready for that in that track.
And I got to say, with those students with disabilities, over the past four years, same thing, we've looked at that. I know you're saying specifically related to the racial equity piece, but I think the same conversations have been had about students with disabilities and that presuming competence, that we can meet them where they are and provide the right support to them in a class. So, you know, as, as I said, this is an iterative process, so we keep going back. And we, we kind of started with the, there's a foundational issue of not even knowing about them. But that's one of the other root causes that we have talked about too, related to students with disabilities. And then how do we try to navigate that, what strategies can be put in place so that there's not, you know, not biases in place prohibiting students from engaging in.
Right, because some of those not knowings are related to the biases. Some, sometimes teachers pick and choose who they will prepare with that information because of biases, but.
My question was actually similar, and this, and it was, does behavior eliminate, one, from being eligible for the CTE? That's one. And then, two, have you considered, especially when we talk about our middle school students, using e-gaming and esports? I know that we have a local organization, I think it's, they're going to kill me, Futures First Gaming, I think. They're now partnering with the Department of Ed, and they use gaming to increase students' awareness of STEM. So they link gaming to STEM, and it's, it seemed to be a growing interest and a growing program. So wanted to know if you, if there was discussion around utilizing gaming to, to introduce students to STEM.
It's, it's come on our radar. I know we have a teacher at Tally Middle School who I think put together a gaming program from that regard. But I'm not sure, I know it was esports, I don't know if it's the same organization. But I'd love for you to send me the information, I could do a little bit of digging with, with that. It's, it's interesting, you know, with the discussion around major clarity and the survey, and certainly in the middle school CTE classrooms, part of the curriculum is learning about careers, right? Exploring careers. But the aha moment, we really dug down to get, try to get a better understanding, is that our teachers didn't have a clear or a clear knowledge base around our high school pathways. I mean, I just assumed. I assumed wrong. But going through this iterative process, going through pipeline, brought it to the forefront. So as we do dig a little deeper and keep going through the process, now that we can see that our middle school teachers couldn't, could absolutely talk about careers in their CTE programming, they couldn't talk about our high school pathways and make that connector piece, which certainly, like to me, that's like a low hanging fruit. We can absolutely work on that across the board. And Heidi's work that PS is the beginnings of that, and certainly to expand that to the other middle schools.
I'd be also, I'd be curious to know the disparities. Or have we addressed the barriers for students who may live in the city versus students who do not live in the city?
We have not explored that, that's time, within this work.
Is that something that we intend to, or are we finding out that's a barrier or?
We would be finding out if it's a barrier or what those barriers are, and then dig down to those root causes, and then do a bit more exploring and then connect, so we have a tight strategy. What happens a lot of times in education is we come up with all of these solutions, but they aren't necessarily tied back to the, or tied directly back to the root cause. So for part of this work is to make sure, at times we just throw things at the wall and see what sticks. We want to be purposeful and strategic and pick and develop the right thing.
Thank you.
Dr. Kutch, you, you had mentioned at one point that we're finding that students that are taking pathways that they aren't interested in, and however they get there, and this is something we actually just talked about at the Health and Wellness Meeting. And I was, I was wondering how often are the last time that we surveyed students on desired pathways? Do we know that we're offering the right options, or are there other options out there we're not offering? And then a second part of that, I guess, is specifically, we know that there's a large percentage of kids that don't have a desire to attend college, and what are we doing to add pathways that will keep them engaged and set them up for success as well?
So the first part, we, we do periodically survey students, but we also have to keep, we have to keep in mind the labor projections. So we also take a look at the state labor projections and numbers. So even though if it was something, I'm just going to make this up, so don't anybody take any offense to this, but flower arranging. And let's say we had a lot of kids who were interested in flower arranging, but yet, when we look at the labor market, perhaps it's not, you know, sustainable, right? Not maybe something where there's a lot of work out there. And so what we also want to do is be responsible and kind of look at both. And so we do do that periodically as our pathways come up for renewal with the state. We have to show actually that data to them from that regard. And as far as, I guess, the trades, I think you're referring to, as opposed to maybe going right into a typical four-year college. We, any one of our pathways, you could go into a trade. And in fact, many times in those particular trades, they like to do on-the-job training. So what we do is we'll have the foundational skills. It might be what we would call a value add with what we're able to offer in our pathways. And in addition to that, each of our pathways has an industry-recognized credential that students can earn while they are in our pathway. And so that industry credential can get them a leg up, maybe on someone else who doesn't have it, that want to go into the trades, that when they do apply for those particular jobs, would have an advantage.
Thank you so much for just being willing to do an audit and to really look at our systems that we have currently in place. I know that that can be an uncomfortable process, but it seems like your team has done a really beautiful job of getting some, some data and, and some information, even if we aren't always comfortable with, with what we find out. And, and I wonder if our, you know, I would ask our district, are we willing, perhaps in our, some of our solution finding, to continue to be uncomfortable? You know, like, for example, like Dr., you know, Reverend Dickerson asks, is behavior something that is keeping some students from being recommended to certain CTE or certain pathways? And I think it would be very interesting to, to kind of see what, what that data would suggest. The other question, in terms of like being able to choice to the school with a particular program they would want, for example, biomedical, I think BHS is the only school that has biomedical.
In Concord.
Oh, and, and, okay. So then, would we be willing as a district, if students who wouldn't have the means to have their parents to be able to drive them to, to their choice school so that they could attend that particular pathway? Are we willing to, are we able to, are we willing to provide transportation to the students? And I think, I think that that would be something, and then also Dr. Warner had alluded to something that I think is, is truly just, just someone who, who worked at a CTE high school, that oftentimes pathway teachers and CTE teachers would often say, we don't have any support. We have, we have a class of 30, we have six sections or five sections or however many sections of 30 students. Half of them are EL, and then we have another half with IEPs, and I don't have support. And so I think that, I think it's an important question to ask, which of course puts us in potentially another potential uncomfortable space. Because are we willing to provide the staff? And can we provide the staff in order to do that? Because let's be honest, in a school, everyone is fighting over our, our special ed teachers, you know.
I, I'll have to put a plug in for NATE and their work with pipeline. As we go through this iterative process, is like an onion, and we are consist, you know, constantly pulling back layer after layer, looking at strategies and looking at these areas, whether they're barriers or whether there are areas of need, looking for that support for teachers that may have special education students in their classroom or MLL students, et cetera. That's all part of this. That's all part of identifying those areas of need, identifying what the teacher themselves need, whether it's professional development or other resources as well, but absolutely part of this process. Yeah, I don't have the data on that. I was just conferring on the behavior piece. We, we don't, you know, when we're providing guidance for course recommendations for teachers, we certainly do not have behavior as part of that, that they wouldn't be intentionally attending to behavior to keep them from accessing a course. In fact, we've gotten rid of any prerequisites for our higher level courses, including AP courses. There's students, unless it's something that builds upon, on another course. But we certainly do not have that barrier within the district.
Unless when it comes to choice, because behavior is a barrier for choice. Like, so if a student wanted to choice to a different school for a different track, isn't behavior one of the criteria that we deny?
I guess in my particular case, I'm thinking about teacher recommendation within our pathways, in this particular case. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That leads us on to superintendent's report. Mr. Holder, before we start, I think I'm going to make a comment that kind of ties in. I know last month drew a lot of attention with the announcement of Lincoln Holder and the promotion of employee 24111. I did have a conversation with that employee since we last met. And with her permission, I'm happy to announce that promotion of 24111 belongs to our current deputy superintendent, Dr. Lisa Wolf. belongs to our current deputy superintendent, Dr. Lisa Lawson. So with that, we now need to move on to the next steps and agree to terms on a contract. Once we do that, I expect we will recognize and celebrate this hard-earned and well-deserved promotion. So at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Heller and Ms. Stock, if you would be willing to volunteer for a small working group to come back to the board with one or more proposals of a contract to be discussed in open session, given consideration in open session, and with the acceptance of the board then present it to Dr. Lawson. Mr. Heller and Ms. Stock, will you join me in this volunteering working group?
I have a question.
One second, please. Mr. Heller and Ms. Stock, are you willing to volunteer?
I I volunteer, but I just want to make sure that we're in compliance. That's all.
Right.
I believe we are.
I I'm confused, though, because the way we just ended executive session was you said that you
We shouldn't be talking about executive session and public session.
Okay, well, then, in this public session, what I will point out is FOIA and the recommendation that I stated, both publicly and in other sessions, is that the Freedom of Information Act has specific requirements. I had a conversation with the district representative lawyer, and the lawyer made
Anything you've discussed with the lawyer is privileged, and you haven't been authorized by this board to waive privilege in public.
Okay, any judgment that the lawyer makes with regard to our specific behavior is privileged. Lawyer's advice as to whether how we interpret the Freedom of Information Act is not privileged. That's public information as to how the Freedom of Information Act is is interpreted. And what I don't like is the the just the blatant, like, like John, you, the the confusion, because what we decided as a board was that we did not have enough information that to be able to be in agreement on the interpretation of the Freedom of Information Act. And you said that you did not have that information, because over the last couple of weeks, you've sent out conflicting emails demonstrating your lack of understanding as to how that Freedom of Information Act should be interpreted. So what you just said, and all of the board members here agreed to, was that we would get the information that we needed.
Nothing was agreed to in execution. We haven't voted on being an executive.
Took the step to decide on board members making up that working group. Because what one interpretation of the Freedom of Information Act, as it was presented to us, which by the lawyer, whose job it is to help us interpret that, said that that was not an appropriate way, a compliant way for us to move forward for board members. And what I requested of you is that you, as the president of the board, not make decisions for the entire board, but that you allow us as a full board to decide how we would move forward in reviewing the contract as to the two options that the lawyer represented as what he thought was compliant. That's either having a volunteer working group of non-board members make it, because the Freedom of Information Act says that any decisions or conversations related to a superintendent contract has to happen in a public meeting. So it has to be a working group of volunteers that are not board members who would make those recommendations to the board in a public meeting, not come back to the board privately, but in a public meeting, they're required to make those recommendations so that the the public can monitor all discussions and all decisions, not one that John gets to make on his own and decide that this is how we're going to move forward. The public is supposed to make a decision as to whether they want there to be a small or at least be privy to, even if the public is supposed to be posted on the agenda. So the public can give public comment about that. Then we vote and decide, based on the whether we want to go with the public or not, whether there's going to be a small working group or whether there's going to be the full discussion and voting happening in the public meeting. John doesn't get to just make that decision on his own without informing the public according to the process, putting that on the agenda item. So the public is aware that that's a decision you're going to be making, allowing the public to make public comment on that, and then you making a decision. That's the process. You don't get to just make those decisions on your own. And it's certainly confusing and concerning when you will state one thing five minutes ago and then come in here and do something totally different. What we said was that we needed our attorney to meet with us as a board to give us more clear interpretations of the Freedom of Information Act, to make sure that conversations we've already had in executive session out of the public eye related to the contract, whether or not they were in compliance with FOIA from previous executive sessions. Because we want to make sure that going forward, we're not going to continue to be out of compliance for FOIA.
What I said in public is that we should not have that discussion in exec session. So it would be unheard of to negotiate terms in public as a full board of seven. It would be unfair to both the district and Dr. Lawson. It would put our district at a significant disadvantage. It takes away all leverage in negotiations. If Dr. Lawson knows the maximum values we might be willing to offer.
And yet, that's what the state requires.
So a working group allows them to submit proposals to the full board for review and consideration in open session, where we can reach a consensus in open session and vote in open session on the contract.
The entire board is responsible for hiring, supervising, and monitoring a superintendent. So why you would think that three people on their own would, it makes sense for them to go off by themselves and review it as opposed to the full board and the public, who according to the 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 state case that you sent to me this week, Wells versus Appicuinec, according to that case, it states that the public has a right to observe that. You and I don't get to decide that. There is an objective Freedom of Information Act. It doesn't matter whether you think it would be unheard of or not. It's what the state code says, and it's what the lawyer, who the district is paying tax dollars to represent us, has said. It's the reason why you said we could no longer discuss the contract in executive session, because the lawyer made you aware of that.
Not no longer. We've never discussed the contract in executive session.
Are you going to go on record and say that?
We've never discussed contract terms.
And in light of the new information that has come forth, I move that we table all discussion until we're able to consult our legal counsel.
I second.
There's no move. This isn't an action item on the
And neither is your decision that you made. Your decision to have a a small working group is not an action item. It was not posted on the agenda.
I can ask volunteer.
For part, no, that wasn't an action item. That was not posted ahead of time for the public to be aware of. But you have a prepared statement, so obviously you intended to do it. And you and Lincoln Holder were responsible for creating the agenda. So the fact that you have a prepared statement means you intentionally withheld that information from the public.
I prepare
So that you could come and do the same shenanigans you did last month.
There's no shenanigans. I'm doing this in
I encourage every single person in the community to file a complaint. The link for how you can file and make a FOIA request is on the website. I have posted it on social media. You, if you believe that the this board or the district has been in violation of the Freedom of Information Act, what the Freedom of Information Act says is the only three factors that you are allowed to discuss in private are the person's name, their competencies and abilities. You are not allowed to discuss the contents of a contract.
That is why we're not doing it in executive session.
You are not allowed to discuss it in private. And you are not allowed to discuss also in private whether or not you have an internal or external search. You are not allowed to have those conversations based on FOIA. It's a violation, because according to the Freedom of Information Act, the public is, has the right to be privy to those conversations. Any conversations that happened previously with regard to whether or not asking people, the president of the board asking board members to do research, which he acknowledged. I'm not talking about an executive session. I'm talking about what the president of the board acknowledged at the last public board meeting. When I asked Kim, if he if he asked her to give her information, that was not done in a public session when he asked her to go and do that research. It was in violation of FOIA. And I have tried over and over again to encourage this board to no longer continue these violations of FOIA so that we can focus our attention on educating our students and supporting our staff and not wasting our time on lawsuits. But since this president of the board continues to move forward with these shenanigans and the other rep organ, the other individuals that he's working with, so that when he comes with a prepared written statement, you can be well sure that he knew prior to this meeting that he was going to make a decision that was not allowed to be made out of the public. And he failed to put it on the public agenda, which is your right. You have a right for it to be posted on the public agenda so that you can come and make public comment on it. And for this to continue is ridiculous. And any candidate or person who is willing to be a part of this kind of behavior should be questionable. So I encourage everyone to file a claim, go to the DA, contact the lawyer, ACLU, any other thing that you want, because for your rights to continually be stepped on is not right.
Can we, could I make a movement that we, I mean, it does sound, you know, to honor, you know, you know, Shanika's, you know, motion to consult a lawyer? But then also
There's no motion to be tabled.
Oh, let that be my recommendation.
Okay.
And then also, I So I would draw the motion. And I'm making the recommendation that we consult our legal counsel first before moving forward.
So do we not have to make a motion to start a working group? Do we get
I'm asking, I'm asking Mr. Heller and Ms. Stock to volunteer for a working group to come up with proposals that can be, that can be discussed, that we can't
So did we make a decision to have a working group? You're asking them to volunteer for a working group that the board did not vote to establish?
As president of the board, I believe I'm well within my party to
The president
Ask for volunteers for
The president of the board has to be compliant with the Freedom of Information Act.
I believe I am.
Well, your lawyer doesn't think so, because he advised you differently, which is why prior to this meeting, we said we needed the lawyer to come back to provide clarification. And what are you so afraid of? If you have such an amazing candidate and you have not already made arrangements outside of here, what are you so afraid of? This entire meeting, we've been talking about collaboration. You have a board of seven people who were elected by their communities or selected by you, in my case, to be able to provide our insight, our expertise on the matters of this district. What are you so afraid of that you don't want to allow all of them to have feedback?
Not for advantage. What I'm saying is, we have to secure an employment contract.
That's what we're working towards.
Can we schedule, I mean, can I, can I make a suggestion that we schedule then a public board workshop so that we can be in compliance? And that way, then we can
We can negotiate terms in public as a full board.
At workshops, community members can only make public comment, from my understanding, at a public board meeting, which is why I sent an email to Mr. Scrobod and said that it would have to be at the May meeting, because the community has to be notified ahead of time so that they can prepare public comment and be given the rights to be, to come and make informed comments so that they've had, they need to know what you're making a decision about so that they can do their own research and develop their own perspective. Same way with teachers. We don't, we don't want, we don't ask our teachers to just on the spot make decisions. All of our teachers, all of our staff, we owe them that.
That opportunity comes when we have proposals to decide upon.
But John, you are the president, and as the president, you are responsible for the Roberts Rules of Order. You are responsible for making sure that this board is following a process in protocol. And you continually demonstrate that you are willing to just wield that power to bend towards your own interests. And you you say one thing, and then you say something totally different. Like, am I the only person who heard John say just a few minutes ago, this same night, that we were not going to move forward with doing a small group, that we were going to invite a lawyer?
I did not. I did not say that. I said I was prepared to talk about it in public session.
You were prepared to talk about what? That's not what you said.
Forming a working group.
Okay, but do, but when I
Because it's not executive session.
When I emailed you this week, John, I also made you aware of what the lawyer was saying for Freedom of Information Act. When you figured out
You can always reconso with the attorney.
Okay, but John, how is it that you get to just decide? And even if you thought you could, just because you can, you've been given the title of board president. Just because you can make a decision doesn't mean that's in the best interest of the district. In the best, you started out with your prepared statement by apologizing about the confusion of last month. And yet, you showed up another month and done the exact same thing, blindsided people on the board. I sent you emails with this very question, and you did not respond to my emails. I specifically said to you, Jason and Lincoln Holder, I sent the three of you an email and said, based on what you're saying and my one-hour conversation with the board lawyer, I believe this is in violation. So my understanding is that the only option would be to do this in May, since you had already put out the agenda and this wasn't on it.
Your understanding that it is, my understanding is not.
Respond. Why didn't you respond to the email and say, I've got a prepared statement? I'm going to make this decision, no matter what the board decides, this is the way I'm going to go.
I don't understand why being
You understand fully, because you're willing to use your power and you're going to do whatever you want, regardless of what people
We have to secure a contract.
And I hope every person who votes for you, who voted for you, recognizes that you are willing to do whatever you want, regardless of what the rest of the board thinks and regardless of what the community says. And it's in violation of the Freedom of Information Act.
I just want to, two points. One, I think the simple solution, if Ms. Stock and I are willing, is that we just consult with the attorney first to make sure that that that's an okay process. And then I was just looking, so the district policy 2.01 says that the board president's responsibility is superintendent contract review. So I think at least for the previous superintendent, I was, I was here for it. The president was who took care of that, and it's in board policy, but that is the president's responsibility.
It doesn't say whether it has to be in private or in public. We're well aware that his responsibility is to review the contract. The question is, what setting is in compliant with the Freedom of Information Act? If it's in private or if it's in public?
And I think, yeah, I think we should just consult with the attorney and
Ms. Stock, upon consultation with the attorney, that a volunteer working group is acceptable. Are you willing to participate?
Gosh, I, you know, I don't want to be excluding other board members, I think, through this process. I think that that's, I do think that we do need to consult the attorney. So if you're asking, am I willing to consult the attorney? Yes, I'm I'm willing to consult the attorney on on next steps. You know, and I do want to make it, I do also, I also just I also do want to make this clear that this is not about our incoming superintendents.
Wait, did you just, you uninvited him?
I'm asking this pigeon if she
And he's not willing to hear the motion that was put on the floor.
There's no motion.
She made a motion.
No, I actually withdrew the, I withdrew the motion, because it is not, I did review. It is not on the agenda, but I did make a recommendation. I, while I do understand that it's the president's responsibility to review, I think most of us here have been very clear about wanting to be more involved in constructing the contract this time around, in addition to the superintendent's evaluations. So with that being said, I do think it would be in the best interest of the board and this district as a whole for us to pause. This is the most important decision that we will make as board members. Pause. Seek our legal counsel. And then we can reconvene. I think that is the best, in the best interest of us as a board. I think that is the best, in the best interest of us as a board and us as a district.
We are invited to represent the public, not to speak for the public, not to make decisions for the public. Where the, we are not held accountable to the public. BSD, where we say we're proud, we say we're transparent. We ask all of these, these other leaders to come up and give presentations every month so that they can be transparent. And yet we're willing, not we're, some members on the board are willing to make decisions just because they believe they have the power to do so. So if someone is unwilling.
Trying to get us to a point where we have a contract that we can vote on publicly.
No, okay, okay, I got it. I move that we enter into exec session, contact our legal counsel now before moving forward.
So moved.
Cause that was at least three days ago that I told you what the lawyer said. So if you were really interested, you would have contacted him.
Robert rules of life says we have to move into exec session.
I spoke to the lawyer as well. We can call him. Motion to go to exec session.
So moved.
And second, motion and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Exactly.
This time I'll entertain a motion to exit executive session.
Similar.
Second.
Reverend Dickerson, Ms. Stock, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are back in regular session. Thank you for sticking with us, everyone. So before we left, I made a request. I'll modify that request and ask Mr. Heller and Ms. Stock to volunteer as a working group to come back to the board with one or more proposals to be discussed in open session so we can give consideration and acceptance in open session and then present those. Present something to Dr. Lawson for our contract. Mr. Heller and Ms. Stock, do you volunteer?
Yes, with the blessing of the board, yes.
Yes, and I'm just, just her and I.
Yes. Thank you very much. Mr. Holder, superintendent's report.
Mr. Ackerman, you'll be pleased to know that it's only 13 pages long tonight.
Perfect.
Mrs. Scrubout. Board of Education members, it's been a busy month since our last Board of Ed meeting. First slide, all about Samsung solve for tomorrow. We've already praised and recognized those individuals, so we will skip that and go on to the next slide. Do have exciting news. Congratulations to Forward Elementary School teacher Carrie Haley, who's been named 2024 Delaware Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. She's a state finalist. Presidential Awards Program was established by Congress in 1983 and is considered the highest honor for educators bestowed by the U.S. government specifically for K-12 math and science teaching. Congratulations, Carrie. Likewise, we are thrilled that Tally Middle School Guidance Counselor Tanya Milionis has been named 2024 Brandywine School District Behavior Health Professional of the Year. In receiving the award, Tanya said, "I started at Tally as a building substitute in 1999, and it's been home ever since. I can't imagine myself anywhere else. I've worked with some of the most amazing people who make many of the things we do so easy. I'm incredibly thankful and proud to be BSD." "Nothing can ever be accomplished without first building a relationship. I believe with all my heart that a student will never care how much you know until they know how much you care." "A school counselor shouldn't have to even say a word to a student for them to know how much they are cared for, how safe they are, and that they are supported and loved. The relationship between a counselor and a student should always contribute to the student's basic needs. My students will always remember how I made them feel. We wish Ms. Milionis the best as Brandywine's representative for the Behavior Health Professional of the Year next month." Wow. News gets better and better. Congratulations to our amazing music educators and Dr. Dominic Pizzano on being selected as one of the 975 school districts across the nation named the Best Communities for Music Education. This is our sixth consecutive school year, an amazing accomplishment. BSD is only one of two districts in the state of Delaware to receive this award. "The award program recognizes and celebrates outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who have made music education a priority in a well-rounded education. Again, congratulations to all of our music teachers and musicians." BSD is proud to highlight the enriching international journeys undertaken by our high school students during the recent spring break. These educational trips spanning various countries and cultures provided our students with invaluable real-world experiences, enhancing their global awareness and understanding. Students from Brandywine and Concord embarked on adventures to France, Italy, while students from Mount Pleasant High School toward Costa Rica. All students immersed themselves in earth cultures, languages, and historical sites. From exploring historical landmarks to engaging with their local communities and participating in cultural exchanges, these experiences have broadened their horizons and deepened their appreciation for global diversity. Thank you to these teachers, Natalie Cecil, Danielle Rossi, Chris Belair, Lisa Callahan, Jen McElvy, Sandy Warmus, Luis Roa, and Darling Sanchez, who coordinated and assisted as chaperones in these transformative experiences. On April 10th, BSD Site Program held a ribbon cutting for their new PAES, P-A-E-S, that's Practical Assessment Exploration System Lab, and the grand opening of their new t-shirt business called Inclusive Tees. SITE stands for Skills and Independence Transition in Employment. At SITE, BSD provides vocational training and opportunities for 18- to 22-year-old students with special needs who have completed the requirements for a high school diploma. Through in-house business and community intern placements, student interns develop skills and confidence to help them achieve independence. Special thank you to BSD Facility's member Ennio Di Alessandro, who helped SITE students build a t-shirt press table for use in the production of their t-shirts. We will actually be recognizing some of the amazing sponsors of our SITE program, I believe in the May meeting. BSD culinary educators were presented, I'm sorry, BSD culinary educators were represented at the Ninth Annual Pro Start Fundraiser Dinner. Thank you to the Delaware Restaurant Association and donors for their continued support. Brandywine High School's teacher, Ms. Denise Anderson, was awarded the 2023-24 Pro Start Educator of the Year Award. Ms. Anderson was granted the award because of her dedication to her students. She went above and beyond to provide ample learning opportunities for her classes throughout the year. Mount Pleasant High School teacher, Mr. Robert Dirk, was awarded Happy Harry's Hospitality Educator Scholarship Award. The award will be used for supplies and materials in the kitchen lab. Thank you to Xavier Tshieho and Harry's Hospitality Group for their generous scholarship award. Congratulations to PS to Pont teachers Joseph Costelli, Alyssa Lucmato, and Yvette Rexbus, who have been accepted as fellows to the Yale National Initiative. These teachers join a group of public school teachers from across the nation who were part of this professional development opportunity that provides public school teachers with deeper knowledge of the subjects they teach and firsthand experience with the Teachers Institute approach to high-quality professional development. Fellows participate in national seminars, which begin in May in New Haven, Connecticut, and conclude in August. During their seminar, each national fellow develops a curriculum unit to teach in the coming year and to share with other teachers in the district. In September, Yale University will publish their curricular units on their website where their work can be accessed by teachers from around the world. And now it's time for the April sizzle video.
Okay, guys, so I just wanted to quickly get started to just say, welcome to our new PAES Lab. Today at SITE, we had our grand opening of our PAES Lab. So PAES stands for Practical Assessment Exploration System. So at the beginning of this year, we talked about a need that we had curriculum-wise here at the SITE program, and I started to have conversations with David Walls, who is our secondary special education coach or coordinator for the district. And he said, you know, I think I know the program that I've seen in some other places, and let's start to look into it.
F consumer service.
We may not be able to get out into the community to experience all the things that this program provides for us. This will give them a chance to explore over 260 different things that they can try here in a controlled environment. We can see maybe they're really good at something we never knew that they were able to do. So it provides them opportunities to do things that we may not have a chance to do in the community.
All right, great job. Along with the curriculum came a supervisor's booklet that we're able to keep data on. So it lets us rate the interns on the quality of their work, how fast they're able to do it for the first time, how much assistance they need with it, and what their interest level is.
In honor of you, welcome to the Lincoln Holder PAES Lab.
We wanted to take the moment to honor our current superintendent, Lincoln Holder. As we all know, he is retiring soon, and we did dedicate the space to him just as a thank you for all of the blood, sweat, and tears that he has assisted us with over the years in helping us and supporting the SITE program here in the Brandywine School District.
Okay.
You ready?
Mrs. Scrubout, that concludes my report, and one more reason, proud to be BSD.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holder. Next up, we have our public comment segment. Just a reminder, we ask our speakers and audience members Just a reminder, we ask our speakers and audience members to be courteous and respectful to each other. This is your time to be heard regarding topics related to the Brandywine School District. Each speaker has two minutes, which time counter will start when you start speaking, and we'll shut off at the end of the two minutes, make an effort to be fair to everyone. We have four speakers in the house tonight. I'll call your name, and then the second person on deck. When I call you, you can come down to the first microphone. First up, we have Angela Taylor with Stephen Washington on deck. Oh, I'm sorry. Microphone in the eye.
Hi, my name is Angela Taylor. I'm a survivor of childhood trauma, and I am a mom and educator since 1993. Now a Wilmington resident and special education science co-teacher at Mount Pleasant High School. Board members, thank you for your service. In Bergen County, New Jersey, I served as Vice President of the Board for Bergen County Technical and Vocational Schools. I served as Commissioner of Education on the Board of School Estimates, negotiating the first stem cell research and nanotechnology labs in a high school, winning the Intel Award. Our motto was "good is the enemy of great." Our job was not to run the schools, but rather ensure that the schools are well-run. In your packets, I have included three letters from the principal addressed to parents in classes predominantly made up of struggling learners. The letters promised online learning to replace their science instruction, which did not occur for five to seven months after the letters went home. Also, included in the board packets are my repeated request to have someone address the hostile work environment that I experienced at Mount Pleasant High School. The first time I shared concerns with administration, I was repeatedly reprimanded, but my primary concern is for our education of our students. In August, when I realized I was in a science class that would not have a teacher, I began collaborating with the science chair and teachers to create curriculum and plan to enable students to receive instruction. The principal granted me access to turnkey train other teachers, post assignments, and grade the students who were in all sections. I could not ethically be okay with being in a room without instruction, even if it meant that I would struggle with my own administrative tasks. An African proverb states, "The child who is not embraced by the village will burn it down to feel its warmth." In teacherless classes, students broke glass beakers and metal poles off the lab tables. In the hallways, there were melee's where students and staff were injured. One student said, "They don't care about us. We're just a bunch of minority kids." That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Someone will follow up with you.
Can we actually have the documents?
Stephen Washington, followed by Jeremy Moore.
Good evening. God, please order my tongue that I say what is acceptable by you. I'm here representing the Delaware State Border Patrol, Wilmington Housing Authority as a commissioner, educator, and a parent who pays taxes in the Brandywine School District. Our kids will fail in simply because love, their lack of. Kids don't care how much you know. They want to know how much you care. It's not happening. Relationships are not being built in some of these high schools, and that's not good. We have administrators at high school that if they don't like you, they take it out on your children. That's not fair. My children will be fine, but there's other children that don't have a way out. And when they are not being loved and accepted because of the way they talk, the way they look, the way they smell, that's wrong. Kid's frontal brain lobe is not fully developed, so you cannot teach a child to be an adult. You teach a child as such as being a child. Patience works. Love helps. But if you don't like a person, and you're very, very rude, it's an issue, and it affects Wilmington, Delaware. Black and brown children are going to jail. They're killing each other. They're fighting in these high schools. I don't see any other children in a high school fighting but black and brown because their lack of love, their lack of building relationships with these children. I have two children I attend in high school, and they're athletes. The best interest is not at heart. I say this, and be mindful. Be mindful. My perception is subjective. I get it. But if you pull my child out of a basketball game because she made a foul and just tell the coach to pull that child out in front of the parents and the students and don't have a conversation with us, that's the problem. We are not going to harm and hurt our children ever. I love our children. I don't like the way they're being penalized and being put in this system. And what's happening in our high school is making them hate each other because it's in the leadership, and I'm going to speak in terms of high school, Mount Pleasant. They don't have the best interests. There's so many fights at Mount Pleasant because layer lack of. We need to do something about it and make the change because good change makes good sense. I love you. I love all these children out here, and I will advocate for every child because I have the best interest at heart for these kids. And let me share something about heart.
Mr. Washington, I'm afraid we're well over time.
H-T-A-R-T. He art. The greater he in me is greater than he is to the world. We are created, and that ART is an acronym, ability, God-given ability. Okay, and that ability can't be taken away because of a person. Because God revealed that. That's the art. It becomes a revelation, not to mention that test is a test of character, faith. And that becomes a testimony when we pass that test. We need to do something in this thing called love. Stop hurting our children.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Jeremy Moore, followed by Catherine Tullis.
Good evening. My name's Jeremy Moore. I've been a part of the Brandywine School District family for my entire life. Man, people can almost never not hear me. I've been a part of the Brandywine School District family my entire life. The first time I can remember actually getting in trouble for real and being scared was because Mr. Holer was like six feet tall, and I was two feet tall sitting in his office. After I graduated high school, I joined the military and decided I wanted to commit my life to service. And when I got out of the military, I came back to the place that helped to make me become the adult that I am now. And you might recognize probably not my face, but my voice from the "We are proud to be BSD" videos that just recently went out. And I gotta say, it was real challenging to watch that last board meeting. It was painful, really. It was difficult to not take the opinion that people are being purposefully excluded from being a part of the decision. This doesn't really have anything to do with like who's going to become the next superintendent or about you at all, Dr. Lawson. It has to do with the dynamic that exists on the board, and you guys are in charge of the entire district. In my service to the district, I have continued to serve Mount Pleasant High School, and I have had quite a few dealings with people from district office. And watching the board meeting was painful because it felt like it felt when I dealt with people in district office, that I was being excluded from being a part of what I thought was best for the students. Please figure it out. Talk to each other outside of these meetings before you come in here and then argue in front of all of us. Just, just talk about it. That's what you were put on the, put in this position to do is to make decisions that are best for the school district. And it's all just a massive distraction. Listen to each other, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Catherine Tullis, followed by Aaron Smith.
Hi, um, I actually, based on what happened tonight, I don't know if these remarks are even relevant anymore, but really what I came here tonight to say was to really express my disappointment with the process the board followed in appointing the next superintendent. Again, I didn't know who employee 24-111 was, but it didn't feel right. It didn't feel like I was part of the process. It also didn't feel like democracy. The school board is perhaps the closest we really get to participatory in democracy, and there was nothing participatory about that decision. Faculty wasn't included. The students, what did we show our students about who we are? And I'm just really profoundly disappointed, and I hope the process changes for the next superintendent. Please, board, put something together so we have a real process, and maybe employee 24-111 would win out if she was, or he was actually in contention and applied for the position. So that's what I have to say. And again, it's really with profound disappointment at the board's actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tullis. Aaron Smith.
Good evening to our distinguished board members, Mr. Holer and the members of the community. My name is Dr. Aaron Smith, and I have the honor of being the principal at Claymont Elementary School, home of Cougar Kindness. I'm also a parent within the district. And I decided to come and speak today because I wanted to come forward as a community member to thank Mr. Holer for his unwavering leadership and provide a perspective as a lifelong educator in this dynamic community. I want to be very clear that I'm not saying that a process should not, should be abandoned in finding a new leader for this district, but maybe there is a need for more public transparency in how we develop leaders from within. I also want to stress that at all levels of leadership in this district, we are teachers first, and we are a community that came out of support of the referendum. They came out to support every person, from our teachers to our custodians, to our bus drivers, to our lunch aids, paraeducators, and building leaders and executive leadership to say yes to continuing to support the development of our greatest assets, our students. I would like to speak personally and publicly about the support and investment that has been made in my development as a teacher leader, because I believe in who we are as a district, and it's important for all stakeholders to know why we are so proud to be BSD and why I said yes to leading in the Brandywine School District. As a second-grade teacher at Harlan, I had the opportunity to participate in math curriculum and decide what our second-grade students throughout the district were going to learn. I was given opportunities to be a leader outside of my classroom, which let me know that even though I did not desire to leave my classroom, in order to do more for my students, I needed to do more within my district, and if not me, then who? I then went to PS and was tapped on the shoulder for restorative practices, which I think maybe our board could benefit from. I had the ability to be a trainer and train within the district on how we can work through conflict and hear each other. In the Brandywine School District, leaders are grown not only for the benefit of the over 10,000 students we serve, but also to provide our expertise throughout the state, serving on state committees and boards, with two of our most senior members of the Delaware Department of Education being grown right here in the Brandywine School District. We not only produce strong educators, we produce lifelong educational leaders with a passion for doing what's right, not for only some students or students within our district, but for all students. Here are my closing points. When I get a really good product from Amazon, I don't run to write a review. Satisfied people don't always speak up, and maybe that needs to change, but silence doesn't always mean dissatisfaction or mistrust. I feel more compelled to speak up and speak out when things are not being conveyed accurately. If you aren't willing to come forward with your complaint so that it can be addressed and how can we verify those claims? When leaders enter into a space of leadership, we are advised to take the first year to listen and learn. There are so many things that you bring to the table that make you a value-added to the seat, but there are also things that have been done previously that, and work that has been done, that needs to be recognized and honored. My devotional today reminded me to be quick to listen, be slow to sleep, and slow to anger. I would urge the board to meditate on those points and build collaboration. And although we didn't know until this moment who employee 24-111 was, every single person in our executive leadership could sit in that seat and do an amazing job.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. That concludes our public comment. Thank you to everyone that spoke tonight. We heard you.
Did we ensure that we didn't have any virtual individuals? So the link was?
We tested it before the meeting. Dr. Hanlon said it was functional. Leading on to board business, DSBA Executive Board, Mr. Ackerman.
The executive board has not met since our last meeting, but there were 39 attendees from Delaware to the National School Board Association meeting. I attended at the expense of DSBA, and the meeting was really excellent. A lot of good breakout sessions. I think most board members have been to NSBA, but I would recommend that new board members, perhaps next year, look at possibly going to an NSBA conference. It is, it is worth the time for folks who haven't done it before.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Legislative Committee update?
There's been no legislative meeting since our last meeting.
Thank you. District Finance Committee, I did not attend. Last week, I was out of town. I do have information that they met on April 10th, reviewed and approved, or gave their recommendation for the board to approve the monthly financial report, which we'll hear from Dr. Flores soon. Reviewed the, the committee also reviewed the budget for the Wilmington Learning Collaborative Funds that will flow through the Brandywine School District. And the next meeting is either going to be the 9th or 15th. Was that settled on? Not yet. 9th or the 15th, it'll be posted on our website as soon as that's selected. Health and Wellness Advisory, Mr. Heller.
Sure, we met on March 21st. Just a quick highlight. Under Nutrition, Ms. Carter talked about a pending House Bill 125, which is a proposal for universal free lunch and how that would impact the district, and also some legislation around meal debt restrictions and the kinds of adverse actions districts were allowed to take regarding meal debt. We talked about the results of the 2023 Panorama Survey. Dr. McKinney present and Dr. Perez presented on that. There was a 68% completion rate, which overall is considered a very high completion rate for that survey, and a lot of bright points in the survey. For example, in fourth and fifth grade, there was an increase in the percentage of students who value school and who have a sense of belonging. In 6th through 12th grade, there was an increase by a 9% increase in the number of students that feel positive well-being, that they value school, that they think it's a rigorous experience, and they have classroom learning styles that align with them. And then we talked about how we could possibly use that survey in future years to gather additional data that would dig into some of the comments that students left, like, you know, what could we do to improve your feeling of sense of belonging, for example? And then we, Ms. Wolf spoke about drug and alcohol prevention education and how we can expand that to all middle and high school students. There was a great student group from Mount Pleasant who wrote a presentation on the problems with vaping in our high schools. There was an extensive discussion on what we can do in terms of vape detectors, how we could spend money that came from the drool settlement to help work on bringing awareness to the dangers of vaping in our schools. The final thing was, I think this committee probably needs some parent representations. It's a, it's a very diverse committee of psychologists, counselors, teachers, administrators, district office staff, board members. I think the one thing that we're missing now with the departure we just had is a parent representative. So if anyone is interested in helping out in that position, just reach out to me, and we can talk about how to attend the next meeting, but I think we need some parent representation on that committee. Our next meeting is May 16.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Parents and Citizens Advisory Committee.
Parents and Citizens Advisory Committee, Ms. Stock.
Yeah, Parents and Citizens Advisory Committee. The last meeting of the year was March thirty-first at Mount Pleasant Elementary. The topic was mindfulness and multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS. I would love to give a huge thank you to our committee chairs, Laura Yagubian, Katie Seiko, and Ari Rosario Carpenter with Ms. Lavina Jones Davis for all your hard work and just much success this year. As board chair this committee, I'm asking for feedback from parents and citizens on issues that you would like for us to advise for the next year. And then just one suggestion I would have for next year for the PCAC is for us to create opportunities for our parents and citizens on the committee to not just be educated on certain issues, but to also have an opportunity to advise the board and district on important issues. That's, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Stock. Parent Council for Students with Disabilities, Ms. Pithin.
Sure, we have not met since the previous board meeting. The next board meeting is Tuesday, April twenty-third, from six fifteen to eight PM at Claymont Elementary School.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Pithin. I skipped over Maintenance Advisory, Mr. Heller.
We met April ninth at Tally. Mr. Reed's going to present in a minute about the new facilities assessment tool and the deadlines for that. We talked about just kind of wrapping up the ESER funding and the projects that are coming to a close out of ESER funding. Mr. Reed talked a bit about the solar grant that's available. We have one point one million dollars available through that solar grant, and he was scheduling a meeting with Energize in Delaware. I believe that'll be this week to talk about how to add solar potentially to Brandywine High School, Claymont, and Concord High School. And there was an update on the certificate of necessities request that we spoke about at the end of last year, and just a preliminary discussion on if we're going to resubmit those for the following year. And that led into a discussion about how we really need to add more members to this committee. There's a couple of community members that are very, very longstanding members of this committee, but the size is kind of dwindling down. So we really need to add some more diversity and more members to the Maintenance Advisory Committee. I don't think we currently have any teachers on that committee. I think it would be great to add some of those specifically. And our next meeting is May fourteenth at Lancashire.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Reverend Dickerson, Wilmington Learning Collaborative update?
No major updates this evening. Our next meeting will be tomorrow, Tuesday, April the sixteenth at six PM. It's being held hybrid, in-person. Our anchor location is Warner Elementary, located at eight oh one West Eighteenth Street in Wilmington.
Thank you, Ms. Reverend Dickerson. Ninety-one-seven WMPH, I think last month I didn't have the update. The advisory board met on March eleventh, covered some of the student work that was being done. Level one, ninth graders are doing what they call interview month with musicians, radio professionals, and journalists. Level twos were making BSD playlists with our very own Jason Heller, Nicole Warner, and Yalanda McKinney. Up next, they're working on something called Morning Brew and News Briefs. Level three students finished their journalism ethics unit and is making official media sponsor materials for, excuse me, for their programming. Level four students are renovating the WMPH website, and you can hear them on WMPH.net. There was also some brief discussion about a mystery device that had been installed upon the antenna, which was determined to be in FCC violation. So that needed to be moved down. Nothing can be within ten feet above or below the antenna. So that was rectified. Next meeting is not scheduled yet, but will be sometime during the second quarter. Any additional board member reports? All right, moving on. Number seven on our agenda, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Ackerman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Heller, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Taking us to number eight, I do have a motion to approve the monthly personnel report as discussed in exec session.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Stock first, Reverend Dickerson second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept student matters as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Stock, Mr. Ackerman, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Getting back to old business items.
Scrub up.
Yes.
Before old business, did we need to vote on student matter three eighteen twenty-four and separately?
That was included in the recommendation for, from exec session. Thank you. Dr. McKinney. Student Code of Conduct.
Good evening. Last month, you were provided with an opportunity to review the proposed changes for the 2024-2025 Student Code of Conduct. So tonight, I am simply here seeking approval for that code of conduct to move forward.
Move to accept the recommendation on the code of conduct?
Second.
Motion, Mr. Ackerman, second, was that Reverend Dickerson?
Yes.
Any discussion?
I would love just an explanation for the update to the level four violation on page eighty-six. Each of the levels has a DFS report.
Or page eighty-six, the last one, unlawful sexual contact, three?
Yes.
Could you ask me your question again? I'm sorry.
Just an explanation of why this was an addition.
So we were in a session with our lawyer regarding DFS reporting, and he advised us that this should be added to the code. So this was added to the code as a recommendation from our lawyer.
Do you know the reasons why?
I don't know the exact reasons why. I am going to assume that unsuch unlawful sexual contact is something that DFS would need to investigate. And so it would be our obligation to make those reports to DFS based on the training that we all have at the beginning of the year for reporting and the things that we need to report to DFS. We would need to report any incidents of unlawful sexual contact.
I would think just for mandatory reporting.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought this was student to student. That's what, this is a student code of conduct. And that was my question. I mean, I under, was there legislation or something that is changing that?
Nothing changed.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I had a, just a formatting question, I guess, the, the index at the beginning of the Code of Conduct. I can't find out. But anyway, it shows, you know, the offense and the page number you would find that offense on. But in the draft Code of Conduct provided to us, there are no page numbers on any of the pages.
Yeah, that's just formatting. When we take the code and upload it into Google so that the whole committee can have the opportunity to comment, it messes up the formatting. But once we download it and then send it off to the printer, some magic happens and they fix all the formatting.
Okay, so there will be page numbers.
Yes. Yes.
Any further discussion?
Yes, that's because we were waiting to find out, and now that we do, that part will come in. So where it has the strike throughs in the red, that's the only reason. That will be updated.
Wait, motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Ms. Jones Davis, approval of the twenty-four twenty-five calendar. Well, I guess we'll treat these separately.
Yes, yes. So good evening, President Scrubbuck, Superintendent Hohler, our distinguished board, BSD families, employees, and community at large. As the chairperson of the district calendar committee, I'm here this evening to seek your approval on two district calendar committee items that were presented last month at the March board meeting. I also provided information in the Friday packet for your review, recapping the first read on both items, seeking approval this evening. First request, as shown up here on the screen, first request for approval is to change for the twenty-two-four twenty-five calendar currently on the October, October eleventh State Professional Day, where schools, schools are closed for our students. That date has been changed by the Department of Education to a September date. So therefore, we would like for that day, schools are open to provide an additional instructional day.
Move to.
I would like your vote.
Recommendation?
A second.
Motion in a second and discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item. And you also received a copy of our twenty-five twenty-six proposed draft calendar. Again, it is displayed for you. The second request for approval is on the twenty-five twenty-six proposed calendar. This, there was a question from a board member regarding whether or not pre-K staff can combine both the state PD day and their designated professional development day into one. Both days, staff will cover different material and information and will not be able to provide a quality training by consolidating two training days. That was a question in October, because there were so many Fridays that are off. So other than that, I am seeking your approval. There were no other items that needed to be addressed on the twenty-five twenty-six proposed calendar.
Move to accept the recommendation?
Second.
I have a motion, Mr. Ackerman, second, Reverend Dickerson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Moving on to new business, Mr. Reed. Department of Education Facilities Tool.
Like to apologize for taking so long to walk up here. So excited about the calendar changes. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to present one of the more boring topics I've ever had to present. And for Senate Bill two-seventy, which was aimed to get around the fact of failing schools in the state of Delaware. And when I say failing, that's a failing conditions of schools. The Senate bill set up various hurdles, which had to be crossed by the Department of Education and the, all the districts. Department of Education had to issue a facilities tool by January one, two thousand twenty-four for how the schools would be rated and how the schools would be looked at. The Department of Education hired a consultant out of Boston. They came up with a facilities assessment tool, which is a document which we all had to fill out. It had school information, a document on good repair. So you'd have to go through the school and rate the condition of the windows, condition of the cabinets, condition of the floors, condition of the roofs. There's a whole section on modernization. Does the school have LED lights? Does it have energy star vending machines, which I've never heard of, and other items in there? And then there was a whole document on asset life. We had to put in the square footage of all the roofs, when they were put on, how long their warranties are, square footage of the brick on the school, square footage of windows and glass in the windows, square footage of walls, square footage of different types of flooring. So all this information had to be inputted. We didn't get the full document till mid-February, and the document is due to the Department of Education, approved by the school boards by May first of this year. All the years after this, we are to update this document. And then we are also to present to the board every May, which you will get the lovely pleasure of having me every April, from now to kingdom come, present what our plan will be to keep our buildings a good repair. This whole document, I thought, was preparing a cost of what it would be to keep up with our schools. It turns out this document gives the replacement value of those buildings. The state also has a cost per square foot of what it costs to build a building. If I plug in all our schools, that would be one point oh six billion dollars. The industry standards of maintenance is two percent, two to five percent. That would be the district spending fifteen million dollars a year on maintenance. We currently have one point four million. I personally think fifteen million is excessive. I'm really not sure what the Department of Education is going to do with this information, but the document was completed to the best of our ability with the time provided. So I'm asking for approval to submit the document as it's been done to the Department of Education.
John, could you, could you talk a little bit, like Maintenance Advisory, you shared the amount of time it took to complete this assessment, and then also how much other districts were spending to have this done by a third party?
Most districts hired this out. I was hearing numbers in the range of seventy to eighty thousand dollars. I don't know how those consultants would know the conditions of the buildings, and it was on average fourteen hours per school to input the data and a lot of math. My head hurts.
John, I'm just assuming because site is rent, the facility where site is located is a rental property. That's why it's not included on here?
Yeah, know how in school there was a kid up front who asked a lot of questions and kept on asking questions how annoying that kid was? I was that kid asking a lot of questions.
I thought you were going to say I was.
No, no, no. I was that kid asking a lot of questions. I don't think, I think Department of Education has my face on a dartboard and the consultant does asking questions. What frustrated me is we are more than just schools. We are Darley Road and the Bus Yard. I got the answer on Friday that we didn't say you couldn't include those. So I'm going to do the math on those other buildings and send that as an appendage, because we do have to maintain those. Now, our maintenance money comes to us based on the number of students. If we are pushing in some schools to lower the student to teacher ratio, those buildings will become more inefficient, which will penalize those buildings. So I think the formula is broken. I have found plenty of industry standards. This is really not that hard, and I don't think it's that expensive. I really am trying to get with our legislators to come, to develop a plan moving forward. But the funding we have now is the funding I had twenty-one years ago. And last I checked, costs have gone up. And I don't want our buildings, I don't want to see trash cans in the hallway catching leaky roofs. And at the current funding, those, we had no trash cans for the past six years, and over the last few rainstorms, we're starting to show up. We're doing the best we can, but at the end of the day, this costs money to give our kids the best buildings and the environment that they deserve.
So you're going to re, you're going to add additional buildings?
I am, but I cannot own site, add site, because that is a leased facility.
But like BACH and?
BACH, Darley Road, facilities, Bus Yard.
So should we not vote on this until you add them?
No, we have to vote on this because I'm required to submit this by May first. No other district is including those other buildings. I would like to send that as an appendage. We do have a board meeting May sixth. If it needs approval, I will bring it on May sixth as an appendage to this. But I have to get something to Department of Education, and I was told to submit the schools.
Understood.
This is the schools.
Do I have a motion?
Accept the recommendation.
A motion in a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
John, on your way back, I do want to thank you for the amount of time. Wasn't something that you could divide up between individuals. So thank you for those sixteen times fourteen hours. Greatly appreciated.
Next up, Ms. Stock. Next up, Ms. Stock, superintendent evaluation for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Yeah, I just wanted to give the public a little bit of background. So last year, the board amended and added a requirement to our policies to require an annual evaluation of the superintendent under policy two point oh one, Board Operation Authority and Responsibilities. Under the responsibility of the president says to initiate, we added to initiate the annual performance evaluation of the superintendent with the B board, deliver the evaluation to the superintendent. And then in addition, under the same statute for each Brandywine board member, we added to provide initial feedback to the president in conjunction with the superintendent evaluation process and also finally six, to develop and or maintain a performance appraisal system to be used in an annual review of the superintendent. At the time of passing of this policy amendment, I did ask the public for some grace as we created the tool to evaluate the superintendent. But since this is our collective obligation, I wanted to report to the public that we have a board workshop tomorrow to help create the tool for evaluation. And just a reminder that it's a publicly noticed board workshop and the public can attend to observe board workshops. The community can also send us ideas for us consider as we develop the tool. I do, I thought it was important for us to publicly acknowledge, so I wanted to take that responsibility to do so. I want to publicly acknowledge that we as a board have not conducted an evaluation of our current superintendent. But I have confidence we will have a fair and effective tool to evaluate our incoming superintendent. So I would like to ask the community for continued understanding as we develop this tool and an apology that we have not done so yet. Just wanted, after a meeting with the board president of Kate Penelope, Dr. Myers, who has written her doctorate dissertation on this subject, we know that we want to be, we want to intentionally collect data and feedback from stakeholders throughout each year. And just in thinking about what this tool should evaluate, I would urge the board and the community to look at what we say we value in BSD in terms of what we actually say in our value statement. So just for the following, just a couple of questions to think about. In terms of respect, how is the superintendent a catalyst for more respect in the district? Collaboration, how is a superintendent collaborating with stakeholders well beyond their executive district leadership? What evidence exists that the superintendent has collaborated with all stakeholders, including students? Inclusion, how is the superintendent created more inclusive opportunities for our students and for our staff members and teachers? Equity, if we say that we value every student's success and that that matters, is there evidence that under the superintendent's leadership that there is both qualitative and quantitative data that suggests that our students' level of success is growing? Integrity, is our superintendent operating with the highest level of ethics and honesty? And then finally, excellence, is our superintendent continuing and expanding our reputation for excellence? Are we, for example, are we gaining more families and students as they continue to choose Brandywine School District? Or are we losing families and students as they, as they choose private schools, other district schools and charter schools? So that would just be, you know, something that I would like to have for the community to think about, for the board to think about, especially as we go into our board workshop tomorrow. And, you know, happy to listen to any other board comments on this.
Mr. President? I'd like to correct a misconception here that Ms. Stock just created. The Brandywine School District began formal evaluations of the superintendents in nineteen ninety-two.
Oh, I wasn't saying that.
I'm talking now.
Mr. Ackerman, can I, can I?
Can I finish?
Can I just one second? The agenda item is the twenty-three, twenty-four
I understand, but, but the
We have a workshop tomorrow where we can address.
The implication was, is that the district has not been doing evaluations. But that's not true. In fact, we were one of the first districts in the state to begin a formal evaluation process.
Be a perfect
It was adapted from the New York School Board Association form. And I certainly understand that we are looking to rebuild this. We didn't like what we had. But I don't want people to think that this district has not been doing evaluations of the superintendent for many years. That's simply not true.
Well, fair enough. And I wasn't trying to imply that, you know, Mr. Ackerman. I was just, in fact, I did say that we have not conducted an evaluation of our current superintendent. But yes, you are correct. It's not that the board has never evaluated superintendent.
I'd like to, I will not be in attendance tomorrow due to the Wilmington Learning Collaborative Meeting. So I do have a few things to, for us to consider. I'd like for us to explicitly state milestones that are directly connected to student achievement. I'd also like us to consider some type of three sixty community survey in addition to a three sixty leadership survey to include us as a board, but also direct reports from the, to the superintendent in addition to the superintendent self-assessment. I'd also like us to talk about or consider professional development for our superintendent, which we have not done so to date. And I can, I will certainly forward these to Ms. Stock. But those are the, I have specific examples that I won't outline, but those are, are the major, the major things that I would like for us to consider.
Thank you, Reverend Dickerson. I'd be happy to have those.
Thank you for that, Ms. Stock. I would like to, I know we have the workshop tomorrow, but for those community members who would not be able to come to the workshop, I'm going to share what my, one of my thoughts are regarding the evaluation that I, I'm planning to present tomorrow. And that's with regard to the three sixty community feedback. I will, would like to recommend that we specifically that we formalize a process to gather feedback from at least three of our key stakeholders, those being the teachers, and it could be via the teachers' union, the parents, and that could be through the Citizens Advisory Council, and then also from our students. So that as part of the annual performance evaluation, the superintendent is getting a scorecard from each of those communities. And so if people would like to send their feedback or ideas as to how that could take shape so that we can present it tomorrow, that would be great.
Any additional comments? Thank you, everyone. Ms. Florrie, twenty twenty-four, March, monthly financial report.
Good evening, board. Superintendent Holer. Always the end of the presentation, which means the, or the end of the evening, which means we're, we're close. So I'm happy to present the closing March thirty-first financial report. On the revenue side, we were ninety-eight point nine percent of local revenues received, so almost near a hundred percent. And on the state side, over a hundred percent for this time of year. And that won't change going into June thirtieth in our closing balance. But on the categorical state funds, it was eighty-seven point seven. So all told, ninety-two point six percent, which is slightly ahead of where we were last year on those funds and in strong position on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, which obviously is the other half of the equation, we are also in good shape. We are sixty-seven point one three expended and encumbered. I'm sorry, I know I'm going fast. You're doing a good job through it. Sixty-seven point one three. Again, that is slightly less than we were last year. But on target to finish, the cash flow that was presented to the committee was that we continue to estimate that we will end June thirtieth with six point two million dollars. Again, short the eight point eight, short from the target and why we had the referendum. And none of those numbers have substantively changed throughout the, the winter going into June thirtieth, but sufficient to meet our resources until we receive those taxes come next October. On the Esser side, which we also reviewed, that is fully planned, as we mentioned last month, but coming into the end, there's only one point two million left. All Esser two is expended and Esser three is the only remaining. We will not be requesting, there's a process to request a liquidation. We will not be asking for that request because we will be fully expended by the deadline, which is September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. I did present the report to the committee. The committee voted to approve the report, to approve the report to send to the board. The one thing of note is because the board meeting is early next month, the finance committee won't have a chance to meet before. So you'll hear me without their having reviewed the report because they'll meet after in May.
Where on this report does it show the Wilmington Learning Collaborative Funds that we discussed?
It was a separate report, but on this report, it, in the expenditure and the revenue side. So if you go back, I'm sorry, if you go back to what is page one on the revenue, there's a new line. It's at the very bottom that you can't read. There's a new line that says WLC, and they gave us different appropriations. Yep, her cursor is right on there. And they gave it to us in multiple buckets or appropriations that totaled one point one million dollars. And that's what we looked at at the committee is which was each bucket. Part of what's coming through the collaborative stays with the collaborative, but part of it is getting funneled through each school district. And those were categories that were set for professional development, for summer learning, for that's what we reviewed and was included in the, the finance packet. Then on the expenditure side, there's also an operating unit where those funds are being expensed from. The Wilmington Learning Collaborative, the executive director and her staff member sends it, but the, the collaborative board votes on those expenditures and then we're essentially the fiscal agent. But it was important to the committee. The reason why it was even discussed is because right when we were having conversations about referendum, all of a sudden, one point one million dollars dropped into our budget. And it was very important to them that we explain what, you know, that that has absolutely nothing to do with the operating budget. It doesn't offset any of our, you know, that six point five million dollar deficit. It was an entirely state-funded thing that was dedicated and directed to a very specific purpose. And so even though it's within our budget, it's not discretionary. I think that's why the committee was interested in knowing what that was.
So just, just to be clear, clear, I'm sorry. So the money flows from the state, the WLC budget to our budget, or does it come right from the state to our budget?
Directly from the state to us.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's a part that goes directly from the state to the collaborative because they also have a check, checking account, but that's money from the state to us directly.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. So there's a I don't know which page, the page, page eight. Page eight? Yes.
Okay.
So there's business office, finance, Esser, and then there's indirect cost. Both of those have the same operating unit codes. But the one, I'm not sure I understand what indirect costs. Well, I don't know what indirect cost is. I don't think I've ever seen that before.
So federal funds have it's, it's a common word you could use for it in replace would be overhead. So federal funds allow districts or any agency to charge for expenses that would be considered general operating expenses. And so for a federal grant, there's two different, there's a restricted and an unrestricted. And it depends on the rules of each one, but it's essentially for the business of business. And so, you know, for HR functions and for business office functions and general kind of administrative expenses, grants can be charged what's called indirect. And so Esser also was eligible for indirect. And that's what that allocation is. It's indirect. Which is the, and, and the federal funds side for Esser was the unrestricted rate.
So is it correct that they should have the same operating unit code?
I think it is because I think it was housed within the business office one. Yes, I think that's how it was budgeted, but it was separated to show that one, you know, one was one bucket and one was another bucket. Because we can still separate by activity. There's other codes that cannot allow us to separate those two. I'll verify that, but I believe that's how it was budgeted.
Is this, is this a new line item, though? Like, I don't, I feel like I haven't seen indirect cost before.
No, it's not a new line item. It was part of the application. And it's, it's not new.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion to accept the monthly financial report, subject audit.
So moved.
Second.
Reverend Dickerson, Ms. Stock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
General information and meeting dates. As noted earlier, we have a board workshop tomorrow, Tuesday, April sixteenth. We'll be at Concord High School in the Raider Room. Concord High School in the Raider Room. Followed by our regular board meeting, May sixth, followed by our Brandywine School District graduations on Sunday, June second. And the order of those graduations, we got Concord at one P M., Mount at four P M., Brandywine at seven P M. And then we have our regular board meeting, Monday, June seventeenth, back here at Brandywine High School. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Ms. Stock, have a second?
Second.
So Reverend Dickerson?
Yes. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your time, participation this evening.